Good afternoon. My name is Max Parker and I am president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, and I want to welcome you all here for our regular meeting for May 2020, excuse me, 2022. I will read a script in a few minutes that'll kind of set the, uh, our parameters for the meeting, but before I do that, I wanted to introduce Pastor Zach Spurgers from the Christian Church of San Angelo to lead a center invocation.
If you had pray with me. Father, we just give thanks for the opportunity just to pause before a board meeting and just to seek your face. God, that you set this thing up, we communicate with you, and that you listen, that you respond, and God, my heart's desire tonight is ask for wisdom. God, as we sit in a room with parents and teachers and administrators and boardroom members, and God, we just pray for wisdom on how to lead our students. God, our praise, agendas are made, as ideas are thrown out, God, as conversations are had, God, that you would just pour out your wisdom and your guidance, Father, on how to lead students in San Angelo, um, in San Angelo, God. Lead them in ways, God, that would grow them to be incredible young men, incredible young women. And Father, we thank you that you, you do pour out your wisdom, that you do guide and lead. Father, we love you. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Um, I didn't mention, we do have a quorum, all our board members are here. Dr. Detloff, our superintendent, should be here in three or four minutes, he's coming back from Denver, Colorado, and, um, so, uh, but, let me read right now, then we'll have our pledge of allegiance, but let me read to you our introductory script that we read before every meeting. I welcome to everyone and also, but I failed to welcome everyone that's watching this presentation or, uh, as a recording online with our public access channel, suddenly Channel 4. We appreciate all of you that are here and all of you that are watching on Channel 4 with your interest in our students at San Angelo Independent School District. All items that will be discussed at this meeting have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop that was held last week. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent administration staff, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone that opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes, and if anyone's here to speak on an item not on the agenda, they also need to limit their comments to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask you, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. Thank you for taking time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. And I, I may have failed to mention, if you do speak on some item that's not on our agenda, please keep in mind that the board by law cannot reply except to thank you for your comments. All right. With that said, I'm now going to call, uh, four fifth graders from Crockett Elementary to come forward to help us with our pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and the Texas flag. Abby Warren, Connor Warren, Corbin Hetty, and Lily Mascaro. Would you come forward?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Now, parents, any parent can come up now to take photos. And while they're taking photos, I'd like to also express our appreciation to Clayton Hubbard, the principal of Crockett. Appreciate you bringing them, your students here, Mr. Hubbard. Thank you. Everybody get your photos? All right. Well, thank you, guys. We have some recognitions tonight, and I'm going to turn it over, it looks like, to our athletic director, Rodney Chant, for recognition of Central and Lakeview Athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, Board of Trustees. We are winding down our spring athletic events, and we had a lot of kids excel, both in team and individuals. And first off, we'd like to bring up the Central High School golf team, led by Coach Blake Odell.
Thank you. I want to thank the, uh, SAISD School Board and Administration for allowing us to come tonight and recognize some of our outstanding golfers. Our boys' golf team had a very productive year, placing very well, very high in some tournaments, and individually, some of our golfers even won a few tournaments. And representing our boys' golf team tonight, we have Miguel Flores Acton, who is a junior, so he'll be back with us next year. He did very well in some tournaments this year, and he was our Hollands Award recipient for boys' golf this year. And then we have freshman Brooks Vaughn, who placed sixth at district, earning all district honors, and, uh, was a regional qualifier as well as a freshman, so we're expecting even better things from him in the future, in the next few years. On the girls' side, our girls had a very, very good year, actually won a few tournaments, and placed third in district, excuse me. We had, uh, two, two senior players here with us tonight, Ryan Honie and Emily Coronado. Emily Coronado finished third in district, was a regional qualifier and was all district. She had a great year, and Ryan placed second at district, and was also a regional qualifier and, uh, all dis, earned all district honors. And Ryan was also our Hollands Award recipient for girls' golf this year, and so we're very happy and proud of them. Ryan and Emily are two senior girls, they're our only seniors this year. I've had them for four years, and we're going to miss them, even though the year did not end well, uh, end like they wanted it to. Uh, I know they wanted to go to state and finish at state, and we didn't get that chance this year, but it doesn't change the fact that they are two great golfers, but more important than that, they're two great individual students.
so they'll be here in just a little while. So, in the meantime, we're going to bring up the boys' state gymnastics team, they
Both finished in the top 10% in their class, and, uh, even better than that, or more important
got to state, and Karina Rot, who's the head coach. Come on up, gentlemen.
than that, they're both just two, uh, great individual young ladies, godly young ladies,
Thank y'all for having us, and, uh, yeah, we, this year, I've told the guys many
and they have represented San Angelo and Central High School very well, and we're very proud of them. So, thank you again for all your support for Central High School golf.
times that this year, the start was a rebuild, without a doubt. And these guys did an amazing job, working hard, starting out the season, we weren't anywhere close to making it to state. Any, I mean, district, regional, state, it was way off. And in gymnastics, you had to make a 295 score, and I didn't think we'd do that, and the thing about it is the rest of state was struggling too. So, I was hoping we could score high enough and place well enough at regionals and slide into state, but lo and behold, these guys, at district, we scored our highest score, we placed the third at district, and then we were missing Miguel, who was playing golf at that time, and I thought if we can get him back, we made it to regionals, got to regionals, and lo and behold, these guys made the qualifying score, which I thought was totally out of reach, and they won the regional championships and made it to state, and they placed ninth at state. I'm so proud, it was one of the biggest wins in my career, because we were not supposed to do it. And when you do that, by golly, it means a heck of a lot, and I'm so dang proud of these boys. And, uh, let me introduce them to you. We have Ian Hamby, he's a senior, step forward, Ian. He was first team all district, first team all region. Miguel Flores, or Flores Acton, he was, uh, second team all region, he's a junior. Logan Kipfer, sophomore, he was second team all district and first team all region. Then we have another sophomore, Michael Skinner, second team all district, second team all region. Then we have a freshman, Eli Soto, he was second team all di, district and first team all region. We do have two gymnasts missing, Tyler Duncan, sophomore, and Julian Torres, another freshman. So, we had one senior just this year, he did a great job, and next year, we're looking at just having one senior, so. We're excited about the future, and thank y'all so much. This means so much to me and the kids to be here. Thank y'all very, very much.
Next up, I'd like to bring the 2022 girls' state gymnastic champions, Lady Cats, led
Thank you for the opportunity to introduce these lovely ladies to you this evening. You are looking at the district champions for the 21st consecutive year, the regional champions for the 21st consecutive year, and the state champions for the fourth consecutive year, so we are very proud of those accomplishments as a team. I will go over, uh, the young ladies and, and announce them separately and by their class, so I'm going to start with the freshman class first, and Kara, if you'll step forward, please. At the district championships, you have to place in the top six to be acknowledged. At the regional championships and state, it's the top 10. Kara placed in the top three in all of her events at district and was the first team all district. She placed in the top five in all of her events at regionals and was first team all region. And at state, Kara placed third on bars, second on beam, second on floor, second in the all-around, and was first team all state. Congratulations, Kara. I had a great freshman class, Kalen Cad, if you will step forward. Kalen competed at the district, regional, and state competitions on floor, beam, and vault, and was named to the all-state team. Congratulations. Daniella, the last of our freshmen, Daniella competed and placed at the regional championships, third on beam and first team all region, and competed at the state championships and was placed number seven on balance beam and was first team all state. That is the freshman class. Thank you, ladies. And sophomores, I'll begin with McKinley Nile. McKinley placed on vault and floor at the district championships and was named to first team all district. She placed on bars and floor at the, at the region championships and was named first team all region, and at state, she competed at vault, bars, beam, and floor and was named to the all-state team. Caroline Steele. At district, Caroline placed on all of her events and was named to a first team all district, she's an all-rounder. At regionals, once again, she placed on all of her events and plus the all-around and was named first team all region, and at the state championships, she placed seventh on bars and was named to the all-state team. Mariel Hartzke, where's Mariel? There you go, Mariel, sorry there. Mariel competed at the district, regional, and state on floor and was named to the all-state Freddie Von Rosenberg, let's go ahead, step forward, competed at regional and state on balance beam and was also named to the all-state team. Go ahead, sophomore John, take a step back. That was a great sophomore class, and they've really made a difference on our team since they walked in as freshmen. Uh, next, I'll begin with my junior class, Ella Burns. That is my junior class. Ella placed on her, on bars at, uh, district and was named second team all district. She placed on vault and bars and floor at the region and was named first team all region, and at state, she competed on vault, bars, and floor and was named to the all-state team. Thank you, Ella. Our seniors, I'll start with my senior class, Ms. Haley Ditmore. Haley placed, uh, on her events at district and was named first team all district. She placed on her events at region and was named second team all region, and she competed on vault and bars and was named to the all-state team as well. Karen, Karen Dunn, competed at district and regionals and was named honorable mention at the district, district meet this year, and she is one of our graduating seniors that accomplished this four run at the state championship, so thank you, Karen. Kalen Lidle, Kalen was also named honorable mention at the district championships and also competed at region and state on the balance beam and did a fantastic job. Thank you, Lidle. Hannah O'Neill, placed fifth on balance beam at district and was named a second team all district and also competed at region, and did a great job for us, one of our, one of our seniors that also accomplished the four consecutive runs there. And our very last senior, go ahead, Megan Vog, Madison Vogel, Megan, geez. At the district championships, while Kara was a district championship on bars, Madison was a district champion on vault, beam, floor, and the all-around and placed second on bars to our bar champion, which was Kara, and named first team all district. At regionals, Madison placed, was the regional champion on vault, bars, beam, floor, and the all-around and placed first team all region. And at the state championship, Madison was the state champion on bars and the floor, and repeated on floor, and repeated as the all-rounder at the state championships this year, and that is a difficult accomplishment, and she did a fantastic job and was also our Hollands Award recipient this year. Thank you, seniors. These, these young ladies did a fantastic job at representing us in competition, but what I become more proud of is when we're out and we're in restaurants, and we're at hotels, and the managers and, uh, people who are at the restaurants come over to me and say, what a fantastic group of young people that we have. We know what we have when we walk onto the floor. We know what we think we have when we walk into a hotel and a restaurant, but it's nice to hear from the public come over and tell us what young, what lovely young ladies we have and gracious gentlemen that we have, and, uh, that they represent San Angelo and Central High School very well, so thank you for the opportunity to brag on them.
from Lakeview High School, led by Alicia Kittner. Come on up, ladies.
Forgive them, they're pretty nervous. I said, all you gotta do is stand there and look pretty. Okay, so this is, um, actually, eight girls that qualified, um, from district to area this year. One accidentally went to Lakeview, um, so she's not here, and the other one's working. Um, so, I, I first of all, want to thank the board members for giving us always the opportunity to be able to brag on our kids. Um, I know it's been two years since we've been here, so it's really nice to be here in person, to be able to see y'all, um, and thank you very much for being able to highlight our kids and their successes, um, at Lakeview. Um, so my first kid that made it past district is senior Alexandria Gomez. She was an area qualifier in shot put, not a bad way to end her senior year. Um, sophomore Anastasia Brayer, she was district champ in the 1600 and the 3200, um, and obviously the area qualifier in both. Um, junior Beatrice Vasquez, uh, area qualifier in the four-by-one relay. Junior Faith Miller, area qualifier in the 800 and the 400. Junior Misha Watts, area qualifier in the four-by-100, and Misha was also awarded a second team all academic state, which is amazing. Um, and then freshman Skylin Carroll, area qualifier in the four, uh, four-by-one long jump, 100. She was also the area qualifier and regional qualifier in the 100 meters, so Skylin was our sole maiden as a freshman to qualify for regionals, so I have three more years with this one, so I'm pretty excited. Um, all in all, I'm only losing three seniors, so the maidens team is going to be back next year, stronger, um, and ready to represent San Angelo and Lakeview and the maidens. So, thank you all so much, this is my maiden track team.
Next, I want to bring up the Lakeview boy chiefs track team, led by Derek Allenbar. Come on up, gentlemen.
All right, thank you for having us here tonight. It was a great season, it truly was, and I want our kids to know that, because if you were at the regional track meet and you saw the look on their faces, you would have thought that it wasn't a great season. But it's not because it was a disappointment, it's because they had really, really high expectations, and when it's cut short tragically, the way that it was because of an injury during the race, it can be hard on the teenager, and it was hard, and, and we could see it on their faces, but we just want them to know that we're really, really proud of them. As a team, varsity placed second at the Angel Relays, they placed second at the district track meet, and the four-by-two broke the school record not once, but three times, and if you know anything about Lakeview track and the standards that were set forth by Coach Nat Sawyer, that's a, that's a huge accomplishment, and so we're just very, very proud of that. So, we're going to go and recognize our area qualifiers, starting with Adrian Flores, he qualified in the sprint relay in the 400. We have Pablo Madero, who qualified in the 110 hurdles and the 300 hurdles. Juan Ortiz qualified in the discus. Devin Paz qualified in the high jump, the four-by-two, and the four-by-four. Brandon Duriel qualified in the four-by-one, four-by-two, and the four-by-four. Jayden Fuentes qualified in the 3200 and 800. Jayden Murmella qualified in the shot put. And then for regionals qualifying was Juan Ortiz, discus, Devin Paz in the high jump, the four-by-two and the four-by-four. Brandon Duriel, four-by-two, four-by-four. Kids, we just want you to know, kids, even though you were a little short of your goal, we're super, super proud, and you don't have to run at the state meet to define yourself as a person, okay? The way you live and doing the right things, it was defined you. So, we're so proud of you.
Coach, 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 you may want to introduce your assistant coaches. You need to be on the microphone.
We have here Jonathan Gonzalez and Miguel Hernandez.
She actually got bumped, she was actually fifth place and got to run at the area meet. We have a lot of underclassmen, you can see, and that's gonna be really nice for the future. Our four-by-400 meter relay team, Reagan Galindo, freshman. Hadi Horhais, senior. Kaylee Self, sophomore. And Delaney Hester, senior, also advanced to the area track meet and placed sixth in the mile relay. These girls did a great job, worked very hard all summer, I mean, all season long. And we're very proud of the success that they had this year, but more importantly, proud of the character and the leadership that they have displayed for our team and for our school for this track season. These are the 2022, or 2022 area and regional qualifiers.
Next, I'd like to bring up the Bobcat Track Team, led by Keith Meek.
Hey, like everybody else has already said, I'm sure, but thanks so much to the school board and our administration for everything that y'all do. Without you, our programs couldn't function, and we really appreciate you a whole lot. Also, thanks a lot for giving us this opportunity to brag on our kids. We love to brag on these kids. I'm especially excited about bragging on this group of kids, because they gave us a lot to brag about this year. I'm super excited about these guys. This team, this is obviously not all of them, but no kidding, you add about five more to that, and that's the core of the group that did what these guys did. They won every regular season track meet except for one. We went to Leander, and it was a tough Austin-area meet. Actually, a bunch of those teams, I saw a bunch of those teams compete at the state track meet this weekend. So, we got second at that meet, so that was a good meet for us as well. Then, they went and won the district meet for the first time since 1996. And then, the very next week, they won the area meet for the first time in school history. We started having the area meet in 2013, but still, I can say, first time in school history. Super, just a great group of guys. And the ones that are standing up here, they are a huge reason why we had the success that we had as a team. And like I said, we are missing a few that already had prior engagements, but not any particular order, I'm just gonna mention these guys. Andres Diaz. Andres qualified for area in the 400, pretty impressive. He got hurt early on and really had to, he basically came back and just gutted it up through a 400. If anybody's ever seen a 400 or competed in the 400, that's a tough race to fake it, but he did a great job advancing to the area meet. Jordan Weatherspoon, he advanced to area in the 400, the four-by-one and the four-by-two, and then advanced to regionals in the four-by-two. And I'll mention that relay a little bit more in just a second. Colton Gossett, Colton advanced to area in the 100 meters, and he was in the four-by-one that also advanced to area and advanced to regionals. And that four-by-one ran a super-fast time, mention that here in just a second. Cole McWilliams, Cole was a senior, he was the area champion in the 200-meter dash, and he was on the four-by-200 that also won area and advanced to regionals. So, he advanced in the 200, the four-by-one, and the four-by-two. Landon Eubanks, Landon was on the four-by-one that advanced to regionals, area and regionals, of course. He's actually the, I say this because this is kind of a big deal, he was the 100-meter champion at the San Angelo Relays. That's kind of a big deal, not many people can say that, Landon was the 100-meter champion at San Angelo Relays. And Darius Harbison, Darius advanced in the four-by-two and the four-by-four to area and to regionals. And I mentioned the four-by-two, kind of give them a little bit of an extra shout-out. Those guys, they went undefeated for the entire season, all the way up to the regional meet. We ended up getting sixth at regionals, but everywhere we went, even that super-tough meet I mentioned in the Austin area, they won that meet as well. They broke a 21-year-old stadium record at the San Angelo Relays in the four-by-two, so those guys were very impressive and ran a really fast time. Several of the guys that were on that relay are here. I mentioned Jordan Weatherspoon, Darius, and Cole McWilliams were the three of the ones that were on that. So, four-by-one ran a really fast time as well, one of the fastest since probably 1996. And that group, let's see, Jordan Weatherspoon, Cole is here, Landon is here, and who else did I say? Gossett is here. So, that whole sprint relay is here that had a great year. Anyway, congratulations to these guys, 2022 district champs and area champs.
If our track team can stay there for just a second, I think this is very fitting. While we're recognizing outstanding service and performance, it's very fitting that we also recognize Coach Meek for not only his contributions and ongoing service to this team, but also for 31 years of service to San Angelo ISD, as he is retiring at the end of this school year. That just says a lot about him as a coach and as an educator. So, if you would join me in please giving Coach Meek a round of applause.
Last and certainly not least is the Bobcat Baseball Team, led by Patrick Penery. Come on up, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys, for having us. You know, we were just talking about getting better every day, and the baseball team, we realized that we're gonna start wearing undershirts. I don't know if we're all just nervous coming up in front of y'all, or if it's really hot in that hallway, so I apologize for that. You know, these guys, it never gets old being here. An hour before this meeting, I get a call, and one of our guys that was standing in front of you guys in 2015 is making his major league debut in Kansas City for the White Sox tomorrow at 6:10, so everybody tune in, watch Davis Martin pitch. But it's fitting, because this team, we had very, very strong pitching, and that's what San Angelo throughout my tenure here has been known for. These guys have continued a streak of the playoffs to make it five years in a row, which should be six, but that COVID year that we had kind of threw our streak off, but we picked right back up where we left off. We have several all-district honors, all-state academic honors, team awards, bukus, outstanding defense, and most importantly, since we had three at our high school, get nominated for best-looking, we're self-proclaimed best-looking team ever in San Angelo. So, that's definitely something worth mentioning. Over here, we have one underclassman that was able to make it, we ended up having three total on the team, so all these guys are seniors, except for one, and I'll just call out the one freshman that's up there. First, we have Kayden Box, he was academic all-state, honorable mention all-district, and he's gonna continue his career at Hillsboro next year in Florida. Second, we have Hunter Wedener, first-team all-district, and he's gonna continue his playing career at Midland next year, first-team all-district pitcher. Next, we have Treyns Nelson, number three, he's academic all-state, second-team all-district outfielder. Number four, Jacob Charles, four-year starter, four-year letterman, signed with Adrian Community College to continue his career next year. Ethan Green, second-team all-district pitcher. He has several offers, McMurray, a few that he's deciding from, and he's gonna be able to continue his career. I'm not sure if I mentioned, but second-team all-district pitcher as well. James Plackey, he was academic all-state, and he's gonna continue playing next year at Howard Community College. Ty Casey, second-team all-district outfield, he's gonna continue his playing career for Angelo State in football next year. Juan Diego Laguna, first-team all-district, he's gonna be able to continue playing next year as well. Garen Hard, academic all-state, and I'm not sure, but he'll be able to continue his career, actually, all these guys are, because they're really good. So, I'm gonna stop saying that as I'm closing to the end here. And Egwada Luna as well, again, can't help it, he's gonna get to continue his playing career as well. And then, the one underclassman, Culture Farmer, right there, he's a freshman. Oh, and number 23, academic, sorry, there was a few. Hayden Hammeister, academic all-state, and he was one of the guys that, all-district from previous years, that was injured all year, but he did get one at bat, and he batted 1,000 for his senior year, which is extremely hard to do. And this is our baseball team, again, I couldn't be more proud of a group as far as getting better every day and bringing positive energy, a positive attitude, no matter what happened throughout the season, because it really is a roller coaster ride. You get on each other's nerves, we're traveling where we're at, long distances, getting home late, they never miss class, except for a few, but for the most part, they were there every day getting better. So, we appreciate you guys having us.
Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, it is with great honor and privilege that this evening we recognize our very own employees beginning an teacher program as part of our Grow Your Own Future San Angelo ISD Teachers. San Angelo ISD has partnered with Hartwell University, along with many others, to provide another pathway for employees who may have otherwise thought obtaining a bachelor's degree was not financially possible while also holding down a full-time job, raising families, and keeping up with very busy full-time schedules. Classes are held online, so these employees can continue to work in our system and earn their degree. We are very pleased this evening that educators already in our system, that are what we believe to be the most prepared for real-world experiences teachers face on a daily basis, can enter as teachers in our system in as quick as two years. Since March of 2022, we have 22 employees that have taken the path to this journey. We're happy to recognize 16 of these employees this evening. So, Dr. Detloff, would you mind, please, coming forward? Now, I promised them they would not have to sing or dance, so please, no surprises this evening, or they will never come back again. I mean, they are in our system on a daily basis, so they do lunch duty, morning duty, and a variety of other assignments, but we're still good. No dancing, no performing. So, when I call your name, Dr. D, if you want to go too far, because I'm gonna pass you the certificate, when I call your name, if you'll come up, please shake Dr. Detloff's hand, and then if you, Whitney, do you mind kind of directing them? Remember our agreement, you won't sit down and you won't leave right away. We would love to get a great group pitcher to honor and recognize all of you in this incredible journey that you've taken to continue to impact the lives of students in San Angelo ISD. So, first, Leonore Adame. I also would like to add, many of these also have spouses that work in our system, so family members, special relatives that are also here this evening, thank you for being part of this celebration. We truly believe that we are fortunate and blessed in San Angelo ISD, and that our people make the difference. Next, Carrie Alvezo.
Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, it is with great honor and privilege that this evening we recognize our very own employees beginning in a teacher program as part of our Grow Your Own Future San Angelo ISD Teachers. San Angelo ISD has partnered with Hartwell University, along with many others, to provide another pathway for employees who may have otherwise thought obtaining a bachelor's degree was not financially possible while also holding down a full-time job, raising families, and keeping up with very busy full-time schedules. Classes are held online so these employees can continue to work in our system and earn their degree. We are very pleased this evening that educators already in our system that are what we believe to be the most prepared for real-world experiences teachers face on a daily basis can enter as teachers in our system in as quick as two years. Since March of 2022, we have 22 employees that have taken the path to this journey. We're happy to recognize 16 of these employees this evening. So Dr. Detloff, would you mind please coming forward? Now, I promised them they would not have to sing or dance. So please, no surprises this evening, or they will never come back again. I mean, they are in our system on a daily basis. So they do lunch duty, morning duty, and a variety of other assignments. But we're still good, no dancing, no performing. So when I call your name, Dr. D, if you want to go too far, because I'm going to pass you the certificate. When I call your name, if you'll come up, please shake Dr. Detloff's hand. And then if you, Whitney, do you mind kind of directing them? Remember our agreement, you won't sit down and you won't leave right away. We would love to get a great group picture to honor and recognize all of you in this incredible journey that you've taken to continue to impact the lives of students in San Angelo ISD. So first, Leonore Adame. I also would like to add, many of these also have spouses that work in our system. So family members, special relatives that are also here this evening, thank you for being part of this celebration. We truly believe that we are fortunate and blessed in San Angelo ISD and that our people make the difference. Next, Keri Alvizo. Latasha Baron. Bianca Creo. Erica Castro. Rebecca Connor. Anne Fernandez. Samantha Gonzalez. Adriana Granados. Karen Juarez. Cindy Lopez. Katherine Montoya. Elizabeth Price. Dominique Rivas. Patricia Rodriguez. And last, but certainly not least, Tara Rogers. Yes, I think she wants you all to do a group photo before we try this attempt to shake hands. So you'll soon be on the opposite side directing for class photos. So family members, we definitely will have you guys come up as well. Okay, let's let some others from the audience come up. Anyone wants to get a picture? Okay, now, if you guys, well, if you'll let everyone come back up and we'll go around, we each would be honored to shake your hand. But before we do that, again, we are so fortunate to have all of you serving. And we definitely believe you'll be the most prepared to soon be in your own classroom. And it brings us great honor and joy to have you serve in San Angelo ISD. Thank you. Looking for another special guest. Surely she didn't leave me in the audience. Oh, where did she go? Ms. Elms, would you please come forward? I think it's only fitting for you to be in the center. But I'll let you stand wherever you're most comfortable. As a teacher for 50 years in San Angelo ISD, Laura Elms has weathered many storms and has celebrated just as many victories. Nothing stops her positive force. Laura opened our opening convocation ceremonies in August of this school year by carrying the torch. So it was fitting we closed our recognitions with our district celebration on May 6th by honoring her milestone service and lifting up this golden girl. You might notice the shirt. Through Laura, generations can glimpse what life was like growing up in the 50s and 60s, know the essence of the San Angelo Independent School District through the past 50 years, and can learn to appreciate education for the wonderful things it can achieve. Growing up in San Angelo, Laura tells stories of her mother making sandwiches for the men on the railroad who gave her her first Hershey's chocolate bar, her father's sign shop, and spending time with Ma and Paul Jackson in the stables, caring for the Palominos for San Angelo's mounted posse. From stories of her family to stories of attending Austin Elementary, Edison Junior High, a Texan at Central High School, and student body president at Angelo State University, Laura is the binding thread connecting our common histories. Laura Elms is filled with stories. She's been an inspiration in SAISD for five decades. And most of all, she's a believer in students. It is the greatest privilege to honor this remarkable educator. There's nothing more fitting for the golden girl, who is the wind beneath so many wings, a hero and everything many wish they could be. Congratulations, Laura, for 50 years of service. The one thing I will add, there's probably no one more humble than this educator up here. So we know every time we call you up here and shine the spotlight, it's very difficult. But it's just that fitting. So we do have a video we want to play very quickly. Is that all the time? I don't know that you've seen this. Let's see. Let's watch. I don't know. I'm going to go ahead and make sure everyone heard that. She said, and here's to the next 50. Thank you.
Three years ago, the credit recovery program finished our last course this afternoon at about 3:50 or 4:50. She's been working on this for three years. And your vision, your hope for us having the credit recovery program at Lakeview all day, not just at lunch or on Saturday, you have made the difference in these lives. This afternoon, my 245th credit was recovered. Those are credits those kids might not have been able to recover. But you let us have the program on our campus and you made the difference for these kids. Thank you very much. I mean it.
All right, I'm going to turn it over now to Whitney Wood, who's our executive director of communications, and Molly Turk, who's the director of community relations for some other recognitions.
And I'm making a note that we're going to have to gather some of those social media messages into a document for Mrs. Elms because it's so wonderful to see the comments that people left from people that have had her as their educator that made a difference to generations like their kiddos did. We even had one of our San Angelo librarians comment about how wonderful she was, saying that she kept a copy of Beowulf because of her in the library. And just everybody was so positive and wonderful about the impact she's made. So from one legendary difference maker, we're going to move on to some other amazing ones too, because she's led the way. We have some celebrations to continue honoring our educators who impact our students and the future of San Angelo Daily. Community partner Market Street created a unique way to lift up our educators and involve our community in the process. Market Street representatives we have with us here tonight are Mr. Jim Marks and San Angelo store director, Kylan Atterbury. I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Marks to tell you more and announce our outstanding difference makers receiving this honor from Market Street.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. What a great evening. What a great group of young people. You guys ought to really, really be proud. But we're going to move, we had some recognition, but we want to say thank you to some people too. Kylan, would you join me up here? First, I want to thank Ms. Wood for helping coordinate this. I'm actually out of Wichita Falls. And so it's kind of coordinate, it's difficult or challenging to coordinate all these teachers getting here and to say thank you. But Ms. Wood was very, very helpful. I also dropped off the bouquet with Alba earlier this afternoon. So great team that you all have here. But good afternoon, my name is Jim Marks. And on behalf of Market Street Supermarket, I want to welcome you to the 2022 Teacher Appreciation Recognition. Market Street recognizes the importance that teachers play in the lives of young people and wanted to say thank you. Your local Market Street Supermarket believes in education, your local community, and trying to make a difference. There were a number of things that became obvious in evaluating more than 400 nominees from this area. And that is that you are blessed with some truly wonderful teachers. If you don't know about the recognition and how it works, let me take just a second. Market Street created a website and they drive people to that website. And there you're encouraged to fill out a form for your favorite teacher from your area. And the local store manager then evaluates these. We reduced those 400 to a few so that he could help evaluate it. Then a group of educators, they evaluate those and then they rank them. So I would like to recognize these people. And the high school first place, Kendra Alboroto from Lakeview. Kendra, would you join us up here? And I'm going to, in the interest of time, I'm going to ask everybody to come up. And then I'm going to make a very brief comment. Middle school first place, Miranda Chavez from Glenn Middle School. Tara Kellicut from Glenn Middle School. And Veronica Stafford from Glenn Moore Elementary. First place winners will win a $500 gift certificate from Market Street. Second place winner will receive a $250 gift certificate from Market Street. We also want to recognize Glenn Moore School for having the most nominations. Do we have a representative from Glenn Moore? Okay. Well, yes, please come forward. All right. I want to make a very few brief remarks. But you guys are really appreciated and loved. And here are some of the remarks that were made on the nomination forms. First, on Kendra, she strives to teach teachers life lessons to prepare them for the real-world challenges. As a coach, she equally strives to make students see the importance of their teamwork and hard work. She isn't afraid to share her struggles as well as let others know that nothing comes easy. Kendra works hard to provide meaningful lessons and she collaborates with her colleagues to stay aligned. She truly shows that teaching is a work of art. Thank you, Kendra. And Ms. Stafford, here are some of the comments. And I've cut these way down in the interest of time. But she goes out of her way to help her students in any way that she can. My son comes home from school and tells me how much she enjoys having her as a teacher. She is just the sweetest and nicest person. And I'm glad that my youngest gets to have her as a teacher. Ms. Kellicut is a most amazing teacher. She is dedicated to each and every student and comes across and takes a wholehearted interest in each one. She always has snacks for anyone who is hungry. Mrs. Kellicut cares regardless of hours and hours of planning and less preparation and ever increasing demands on her job. Ms. Kellicut comes to school to teach every day with passion and making such a difference in the lives of students she serves. She is an incredible teacher. And lastly, Ms. Chavez. And she would put notes telling us how much she missed us. When we were able to get back to school on the first day after COVID, she went to see, I went to see, and she didn't let me. Let me go with, when I lost my dad in June of 2021, she got in touch with me and checked on me and helped me feel a little better about the situation. So Mrs. Chavez was always there for me and my classmates during the seventh grade in person, online, and after, and still is there to help me and give me advice today. Mrs. Chavez was the best teacher and role model that I could ever have. And I hope I might have a chance of having her teach me in the future. So congratulations, lady. Kylan, do you want to, for photo purposes? I want to make one last comment. If you're planning for a year, sow rice. If you're planning for a decade, plant trees. If you're planning for a lifetime, educate people. That's what you ladies do. And we thank you and we say thank you very much. We appreciate it. We appreciate it. I think Mr. Atterberry actually has the gift certificates for you. So. While they're taking that last photo, I want to thank the school board and you, Mr. President, for allowing us to come in. And on behalf of Market Street, we say thank you and we thank you for the job that you do for the community and for our young people in the community.
On behalf of our board, we want to thank Market Street also. We really appreciate you guys being here. We just commented that was very generous on you guys and we appreciate you honoring our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Whitney, would you, Whitney, Whitney, ask him to come around.
Thank you, Market Street, and congratulations to our difference maker educators. Y'all are amazing. So I'm going to move on to the next one, not because they're not amazing. I'm going to keep celebrating. But it's kind of related because how incredibly appreciative we are and how important it is to have support for San Angelo ISD from community like from Market Street to join in our mission of preparing future-ready graduates. We recognize it is invaluable for our students in the district to foster relationships just like that within our community. Two weeks ago, we had a wonderful showing of the spirit of coming together and of our West Texas generosity to celebrate our SAISD difference makers, like those ladies. For the first time ever, we celebrated SAISD Difference Maker Day in San Angelo officially proclaimed by Mayor Gunter on Friday, May 6th, and our community partners showed up in a big way. Today, we extend our thanks and celebrate those community partners for joining us and lifting up our educators and all SAISD difference makers who make a difference in the lives of nearly 14,000 children every day, supporting the future of our community and nation. Community partners started by welcoming SAISD employees outside of the district celebration in a pep rally sort of fashion. And then each campus and department had a community partner provide their team goodies or something special. We had 34 community partners who joined us on Difference Maker Day by providing a little extra appreciation and gratitude for our SAISD team members. So we want to say thank you to those partners. We have Atmos Energy, Contra Sports Network, Whataburger, Redeemer Church, Dairy Queen, The Y, YMCA, San Angelo Schools Foundation, Howard College, Kona Ice, Double Dave's Pizza Works, Berkshire Hathaway, and that was Kathleen Flugern and Catherine Lucas, Kerbo's Office Systems, VGI Technology, Crunch Fitness, Gandy Inc., Connection San Angelo, Synergistic, West Texas Rehab, Discover San Angelo, Housley Group, MHMR of the Contra Valley, HEB, Contra Valley Retired Teachers Association, formerly San Angelo Retired Teachers Association, The Teacher Store, Reese Albert and CSA Materials, Inc., Contra Valley Council of Governments, Shannon Medical Center, Chick-fil-A, Scholastic Education, The Boyd Family, Lamar Advertising, and Southwest Outdoor Advertising. These community partners answered a call and we are so thankful. Please join us in a round of applause and appreciation of their support of public education, SAISD, and our difference makers. And these are those partners. And we just wanted to give gratitude for those folks that have really lifted up our team members. We are also blessed to be able to continue with the theme of thankfulness this evening. We are so proud to live in a community where the spirit of generosity is alive and well. And it is wonderful again to see it in action on the annual day of giving powered by the San Angelo Area Foundation, San Angelo Gives. Tonight, we want to say thank you to our community for raising over $4 million for worthy causes with some of those funds going to support SAISD students, including through our San Angelo Reads Community Wide Literacy Initiative, the new Cyber Patriot Team Support that Brandon Lagon and Jennifer Feck have been working to grow as part of the cybersecurity initiative with Angelo State University and the University of Texas, San Antonio, and several initiatives at SAISD campuses. Thank you to our entire community, the San Angelo Area Foundation, and all generous folks that, including ours, that have shared with us that we've shared up here. Please join us in thanking these supporters and the San Angelo Area Foundation, which is celebrating 20 incredible years later this week with a round of applause. Hey, we complete our recognitions this evening by honoring an outstanding community partner and supporter of public education and literacy, United Way of the Concha Valley. This dedicated group fights for the education, health, financial stability of all individuals in the 14 counties of the Concha Valley, including many of our SAISD families. Today, we recognize United Way for their partnership and support for our San Angelo Reads Community Wide Literacy Initiative. Like San Angelo ISD, the United Way understands the importance of reading and through their program, United We Read promotes reading to and with children. Earlier this month, United Way supported us by providing over 1,000 copies of the book, The Word Collector by Peter Reynolds, to gift to each and every one of our San Angelo ISD second graders, along with a fun activity so our students could create, supporting our learner profile. Importantly, they also provided us with Spanish language copies to provide our emergent bilingual second graders. United Way of the Concha Valley CEO and President Ashley Ammons also joined us at San Jacinto Elementary to read to our second graders and help them through their activity. Although the lovely ladies of the United Way could not be here with us today, I do want to give them a shout out. President and CEO Ashley Ammons, Vice President of Donor Engagement, Aspen Roberts, and Community Impact and Marketing Associate, Cameron Cummings. That does conclude our recognitions for tonight because our what a teacher that we celebrated, we will be moving over to June. So thank you.
Thank you, Whitney, and thank you, Molly. All right. We now have a gin item for our, to approve our minutes for our meetings, our special finance pre-agenda meeting for April 11, 2022, and a regular board meeting for April 18, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes of April 11, 2022 and April 18, 2022 for special finance meeting and regular board meeting.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gallegos and a second by Ms. Mazel Flint to. Oh, Lepita. Oh. Wow, good. I was looking down. I just heard a voice. You're getting more positive over there. Good. All right, Ms. Royo is second that. So I appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right, now we have, for those that might have signed up for public comment, and I know Mr. Pasetti has signed up, this is time to come forward for comments on topics not on our agenda this meeting.
Good afternoon, administration and school board members. I am a concerned father that has a student in the district. A couple of items that I wanted to bring up that are on the agenda and comments that I'd like to make. I know that last week was a big week for the district because of SARS testing. I know one of the things I did is I came to the pre-agenda meeting and I was talking to Mr. Lehman and I asked him, you know, what was important to him? And he said it was about, you know, worrying about the, you know, students of the district having good scores and what it takes for them to get those scores. You know, I don't know if the district does this with the kids. First thing I did was ask my son, I did a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And I said, "Son, you know, how do you feel that you did on this test?" And, you know, he had some testing anxiety and, you know, he's only in third grade, but he still has anxiety about it. You know, he had concerns about, you know, software glitches. I don't know if anybody's gone in and talked to the students, but, you know, some of the students, and they don't have to be necessarily have an issue. They don't need to be on the spectrum, just any of the students that are having concerns. You know, when you're in there, you've been told the whole year that you have to do well on this test. And, you know, according to the district, we're eliminating, you know, all kinds of, you know, any kind of outside stimulus or any of that. We want the kids to go in there and concentrate. And then the first thing they have when they sit down is fail to load. And then this kid has failed to load. And then before they know, everybody else is having failed to load. And now what are they focused on? Fail to load. So I don't know if the district has gotten that comment from the students or they've even asked for that comment from the students. And if they haven't, I would suggest you go talk to the students and I would hope that y'all would implement some kind of corrective and preventive action plan for that. Another one of the things that they, that my particular student brought up, I don't know that, you know, I never took the SAT, but I've been told that there's a whole psychology that goes behind that. And when they're prepping you for these tests, they'll tell you, you know, imagine yourself in the room. You know, do the same thing you did the day, you know, when you took the prep test. You know, eliminate all these outside things and go in there and you're only changing one variable. So instead of having a practice test, you're taking the real test. And one of his comments was, "Well, normally we take math tests in our math class, but they weren't allowed to have any math posters up because I guess it could be considered cheating." And it was just told to me that some of the teachers would go and cover those things up and allow the students to take it in the room where they're comfortable. However, our students were brought out and put in another room where they don't normally take the test. And so now they're focused on a different chair, different environment, different stimulus. And I'm just like, well, why would we change a variable that we have control of? I don't understand that. I mean, do the parents need to come in and cover those posters up? Y'all don't have the headcount to do it? You know, I don't know. I would hope that y'all might talk to the students and see if that's a concern. You know, I don't know if y'all have any psychologists on the board. I know you like your communication. You have a lawyer here. Maybe one of your other directors is a child psychologist possibly. But you could see if that these outside stimulus is or impacting their scores because my son wasn't telling me about trick questions. He wasn't telling me about, you know, how he was going through the things. He was telling me about there's computer glitches. I don't understand why it's happening. I'm in a strange room and it's not where I normally take tests. So those are concerns I have as a father. I hope that y'all would also have those same concerns. You know, I see a lot of the, in fact, I saw that, you know, our communication team here got nine awards in communication. You know, I've had some concerns with the communication team. I've had some FOIA requests out since April 9th and I'm being told that, you know, possibly this month on the 17th, I might be able to discuss some of those. I feel like that's way too long. And then some of the FOIA requests that were answered, I mean, essentially a lawyer wrote this and you do have an esquire, so it is a lawyer that wrote it. I'm just a concerned father that has some questions. If y'all have things to hide, maybe we shouldn't be in a public forum. I just want to know these items and to be told, especially this one, because my son was impacted by someone that came in under District of Innovation that was uncertified, waiting for, or temporarily certified, waiting to get certified and really set my son back. And so when I ask for a list of teachers hired under District of Innovation, I'm told, "Public information request needs to be for information already in existence." So you're telling me this district does not know who was hired under your District of Innovation plan? That scares me. How do we not know that? How is that not in existence? So that's another concern I have. You know, last week, we are here in the pre-agenda meeting. I don't remember the name of the consulting firm, but it was Parker Hill. There were some very concerning things that I saw at some of these schools and trusses that could simply be fixed with, you know, just a gang plate. It seems like the individual that was there at the time isn't very savvy with construction terms. But, you know, maybe that's some things that we should communicate to the parents. You know, we put out all these communication things and it's always sunshine and bunny rabbits, but it's not reality. So why don't we have that same communication out there that says, "Hey, look, if your kid goes to Reagan, here's the trust that's holding up the floor." And maybe you'd have a concerned parent like me that would say, "You know, if you simply added a couple of gang plates, we could probably fix that trust." And I would gladly go do it for free if that's what was holding up the floor that my son was walking on. But once again, we only put out what y'all want the narrative to be. I don't ever see any reality out there. And then, you know, when I see all these great things for kids, you know, "Hey, look at these kids doing this thing." Well, the flip side of it, there's 16 other schools that didn't do that thing. And that's very hurtful to those kids. Because why do these kids get to do all this great stuff? And I go to a school where nobody cares, so I don't get to do any of it. And one of the things I did, because our school, Bowie, didn't do anything for the SARS test. I heard someone say some schools were doing breakfast at champions. They were having these rallies. They were doing all this great stuff, coming up on five minutes?
No, it's coming up seven minutes.
Okay, well, I'll learn to speak faster. I'll be back next month.
Well, I appreciate you being here, Mr. Pasetti. Thank you. We now have some reports. Dr. McFarland, student enrollment report.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. The enrollment report for this month represents the 32nd Monday of the school year, which was taken as a snapshot on April 25th of 2022. So the 32nd Monday of the school year. In the elementary campuses, we had a total of 6,424 students. In the middle school campuses, we had a total of 3,160 students. Middle school, I'm sorry, high school campuses, 3,984 students. So a district total of 13,649 students for the 32nd Monday of school, which in comparison to this exact timeline from last year is down 209 students. Questions I can answer for clarification?
Thank you, sir. And I don't know, Dr. Ritter, whether there's any, or Dr. Detloff, I don't remember what you said at the pre-agenda meeting about update on academic programs. Is there anything tonight or partnership with Goodfellow?
Yes, sir, we have a couple of updates. And Dr. Ritter, you can make sure that I'm doing this right if needed. I believe we have Shelley Huddleston providing an update. And also Tiffany Hebner will be providing an update as well. And if there's additions to that, we're ready.
Good evening, Dr. Detloff, Mr. Parker, members of the board. This is just a quick update about our summer programming that we have planned for June and July of this year. First of all, just the purpose of our summer programming is to close learning gaps, prevent summer slide, and build the reading skills, especially in our K through two students. We also want to just build excitement and a sense of belonging. We also want to just build excitement and a sense of belonging as people transition. So we're going to continue with our middle school jumpstart transitions. And then, just like Ms. Elms was talking about, we still have a lot of students that we're trying to help catch up academically with high school credits. And so that's part of our offering for this summer. So first, talking through our K through 2 literacy camp. This will be literacy skills in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. We're going to continue with the scholastic literacy camps that we've done for the last couple of years. Those have been very successful. So those will be held in July this year. We thought that we would try to do this in July prior to school beginning, kind of give kids a good jumpstart on literacy right before the beginning of school. So those dates will be July 13th through the 29th. And they'll be held at three locations, Bel Air, Goliad, and Santa Rita. And we have some really great administrators who are going to be in charge of those programs. We also will have our special programs extended year, so we have students in special education that still need some help in working with their goals. Maybe they have some compensatory services that they still need. So there will be extended school year programs by invitation for students who are in some of our functional academics programs, our early childhood special ed, and then our high school special education programs. We also are going to have a special program just for our English learners. And so that will be held at Bradford Elementary, June 6th through July 1st. That is for emergent bilingual students that are pre-K and kinder, also working on their literacy skills and hopefully giving them a good jumpstart into our bilingual programs for those students who qualify. So we're looking forward to Kristi Diego's leadership as she works with our summer bilingual, emergent bilingual program. And again, as I mentioned before, we will have a high school credit recovery. And for those who need extended preparations for their end of course exams, that will be held at Central High School and at Lakeview High School. And as we've started doing about four years ago, we're going to hold those in both June and July. And those are in-person and also hybrid online courses. So students have the opportunity to be on campus and to get help directly face-to-face from a teacher, but there also are opportunities for online hybrid learning for those high school students. And we found that's been very successful in helping them gain their credits. And also with the new House Bill 4545, which is accelerated instruction for students who have not been successful on their STAR tests, we will also have preparation for that. Once again, this is something we started a couple of years ago that was very successful, and that is to have a middle school jumpstart program. So all three of our middle schools are inviting incoming sixth graders. So this year's fifth grader is moving on to middle school. And so at Glenn, Lincoln, and Lone Star, there will be four two-day programs, June 13th through the 23rd, and those will be just to give our incoming sixth graders a good look at the middle school experience and help them get excited about middle school and help ease some of the anxiety that often comes with transitions into middle school. And then lastly, just to highlight, our San Angelo ISD STEM Camp, that's always a huge, exciting program. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, applications open in the morning. Is that correct, Ms. Wood? Okay. So STEM Camp will be July 13th or the 14th. It's a one-day camp, 8:30 to 3:50 at Bel Air. And that's for our second through fifth graders. Brandon Lagon and Jennifer Fek are planning some really great, amazing things that have mostly, well, just all kinds of things with STEM and robotics. And so that's going to be an opportunity, an application process that opens tomorrow. So are there any questions that you guys have about our summer programming?
Ms. Huddleston, application process, tell me a little bit about that. How does a student qualify for?
For the STEM Camp, it's not necessarily qualification. It's just an application process. Yes, but for other programs, there is...
It's limited number?
Yes, it is. It's a limited number. But our other programs all are, those are invitation programs depending on academic need.
Okay, thanks.
For all the rest. And I didn't mention this, but we will have meal services provided in June at Bradford and at Lone Star. And then we are trying to coordinate with the Food to Kids program in July to help with some meals there. So we will have a couple of sites for summer meals.
On the STEM Camp, where it says currently enrolled, second through fifth graders, does that mean you're a second grader now and you're a fifth grader now?
Yes, sir.
You're not talking about next year. You're talking about right now.
Correct.
That's what currently enrolled means, currently enrolled. I got it.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Huddleston. The K through 2 program, the reading programs, those are by invitation as well?
Yes, sir. So what we did was we established some cut points based on their M-class data and their NSGRA data. And so those kids who are in most need of some reading recovery moving into, those are the kids that we'll prioritize. And it looked like, at first, it looked like it was just going to be kinder and first, but we had enough teacher applicants that we were really excited that we could expand that all the way through second grade. So with that, I'm going to bring up, there you are, Tiffany Hebner. And she has some really exciting information for you about a grant that we received from the Department of Defense. So Tiffany.
Okay. So I'm Tiffany Hebner and Director of Advanced Academics and Fine Arts, and I'm super excited to tell you guys about a defense, we got a Department of Defense grant to send our high school teachers to training. It's called Laying the Foundations and College Readiness Training through the National Math and Science Institute. And all the way this came about, I felt like I was on Oprah. Oh, really exciting. But we didn't think we were going to get the grant. We were sending our honors middle school teachers, you know, the district paying for that, and thank you so much for that. That's amazing. They said, "Well, let's just go ahead and submit this grant anyway." Okay. So Teresa Goodwin, our liaison at Goodfellow, worked really hard behind the scenes for them. They submitted the grant and called me and said, "Hey, you guys, we want you to meet on a Zoom call with us. I don't want to tell you anything over the phone. We really want you to Zoom with us." So I got on the Zoom call, and they told me all these wonderful things. So here's what we got from the grant. We got the grant. So we are sending all of our honors teachers from STEM, STEM honors teachers from both high schools, Lakeview and Central. They receive 15 hours in-person instruction and 12 hours online training. And then our AP teachers, they receive 15 hours and 31 hours of online training. Each campus leadership team, they have, they're going to send a leadership team, both from Lakeview and from Central. And they will get 15 hours of in-person training and three hours online training. Really cool thing about that is leadership, they can earn up to $1,000 stipend doing this per year. This is a two-year grant. And our teachers can earn up to $2,000 stipend. Again, it's a two-year grant. And our, also comes, okay, it just gets better. Like, they just kept telling me, "There's more, there's more." So the more is that there's an AP STEM STAR award for our students, and we get to choose the criteria in which we give those awards. And of course, the number is based on how many are in our AP program. And then, of course, they want to reimburse some of our AP STEM fees. So with all that said, I thought, okay, I'm on Oprah. This is wonderful. But then we met with them again, with our teachers, we zoomed with them, and our teachers get to have their own room when they go. They can book a flight. They have car rentals. They're going to pay for all, like, literally all expense paid for these workshops. And just to see the teachers' faces when they told them that, that's exciting. I mean, how often do teachers get to go to, you know, go somewhere and get their own room and their own car rental? And it just felt special. So I just want to thank Goodfellow Air Force Base for Teresa Goodwin so much for working on this, and for the National Math and Science Institute for even applying for this for us. And I'm really excited for our teachers. Y'all have any questions?
No, thank you for working on this, Tiffany. It is, I know it's, how many total teachers will this impact?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Well, total, we're paying for some. The district's going to pay for the middle schools, so it's going to be around 70.
Wow. And where, you probably said it and I missed it, but where will they be going?
There are three options. They can go to Midland, San Antonio, or Dallas.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for bringing us that news. Anybody else have questions, Lanny?
I was just wondering, timeframe. They're going this summer, like, what time during the summer?
So they have a June one they can choose from and July. They're pretty flexible on the dates, knowing people probably have travel arrangements. But this summer, and then they'll do it again the following summer.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
And are we up with you again, Dr. Gomez? I don't know where we are on the, I think we just combined the teacher recruitment. Yeah, I think we were, did the academic programs in Goodfellow Air Force Base, and now we're teacher recruitment.
Well, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, we have some individuals that have been waiting here very patiently. And so when we're giving a human resources board report, I think it's most fitting to hear from the people rather than just me up here speaking. We began this evening with some of the events we most enjoy bringing forward, and those are recognition. So I already shared the first bullet as part of our Grow Your Own, and really lifting up current employees in the district and helping them reach their professional goals that are best for them and their families. And so that's that first bullet for you with the current paraprofessionals we have in some capacity in our school district that will, they either began in March, or they'll begin June 6th on their journey for their Bachelors of Science while still working for us in a full-time capacity. So I'd like to go on to that next bullet, and I'm very proud and honored to introduce to you this evening our very first current high school student that will graduate on Saturday, May 28th. We've already offered her a position. She will be working at Bradford Elementary in the capacity of a special education paraprofessional. So I'd like to introduce to you Zenaida Dominguez. Please welcome Zenaida to the board. So as Zenaida comes up here, she's already a celebrity. You've probably already seen her. She's on television. You've seen her on a commercial for being an exemplary student in San Angelo ISD. She's also the president of the Lakeview Capturing Kids' Hearts ambassadors. She's highly involved in multiple other student organizations. But Zenaida wants to be an educator. So being employed with San Angelo ISD, she will be part of the program I shared with you earlier in conjunction with our other employees. And she'll be working at Bradford. And they've stuck around here because they're already in support of Zenaida and her new journey as an educator in our system. But I'd like for Zenaida just to share with you briefly what it means to her to not only have been a product of San Angelo ISD, but to begin her career serving in this capacity when she finishes and graduates with her Bachelors of Science and gets her teacher certification, which she will do through this program. She will be serving in one of our classrooms.
Hello, good evening. First of all, I want to say thank you to the school board for giving me this opportunity. I am honored to be a product of San Angelo ISD. As I close this current chapter in my life at Lakeview High School, I am excited to begin my new journey working towards my degree in certification in teaching. What most excites me is the ability to learn alongside SAISD employees in a real classroom environment while obtaining my credentials. SAISD has given me a way to discover my passion for teaching in a whole new light, so I want to thank everybody who have worked to get me here. I look forward to carrying on the tradition of guiding others like myself to finding their passion and really realizing that just because, you know, their parents or their family did not go to college, they cannot let that define them as a person, and they can do it. Being able to step into an SAISD classroom when I'm qualified is a drive that I need to keep me going. Thank you.
I know this isn't quite customary during a board report, but they've been very patient. Can we take a real quick picture, Dr. Detloff, with you and Zenaida, and also with our Bradford staff? Oh, la pita. That means you've been summoned as well. Come on forward, Mr. Royo.
Ms. Carrasco needs to get in there too.
So pictured at the top was Zenaida and myself. We had the great pleasure of reading at Holloman. And it's definitely a blessing that Zenaida has answered her calling to be a future teacher, and we're so happy to have her serve in this capacity. The last bullet talks about our campus visits. Even before the pandemic, we saw a decrease in individuals going into the field of education. As with any industry, we must tell our own positive story. So often you hear about going into education in high school. You'll see the picture below. Those are two future educators I shared. We've already given them a contract. So, Mr. Parker, it does have your signature. They are ready to work for SAISD in the year 2035-36. Those are second graders in Mr. Sadler's class at Bonham Elementary. They have their badge and their contract. It's about an awareness. We all can think about those future teachers sitting in our classrooms. So how do we lift up the profession that we all chose and make that spread through our children of today and tomorrow? So one of the things that even talking to Zenaida, just watching her in action with her peers and talking with Mrs. Carrasco and saying, "Okay." So one of Zenaida's responsibilities will be creating the teacher club for Bradford Elementary to then lead to our clubs in our middle schools, because we have clubs in our high schools with the Taffeyan organization. Also, you'll see campus visits. We've been very busy through human resources going to talk specifically to our high school students as a part of our CTE pathways who are in those educational courses about opportunities with the district such as Zenaida. For the first time this year, we've already certified nine of our current high school students with educational certificates. Never before have we done this. That means they can work. We prefer they work here in San Angelo ISD, but we realize some of them will be going away for college. And that is, whatever path they choose, we 100% support them. If they are attending here in Angelo State, a Howard College, a partnership such as Hartwell, Grand Canyon University, that's not for us as the employer to choose. It's for us as the employer to provide opportunities, and that's what we want to do for our staff. But for students, knowing that that's their direction, if they have that educational aid certificate, we can employ them in our systems, either in a full-time capacity such as Zenaida, or in a part-time capacity depending on their school schedule. And so we've already had those conversations with them. And we have several that are applying with our system, which excites us. It gives them real-world opportunities while they're in pursuing their degree plans. And moving on to teacher retention specifically. Certification support. As I mentioned just a few minutes ago, we knew even pre-pandemic less were going into the field. So this year, in the So this year, in the fall and continued in the spring, we've offered ongoing certification classes to support either current educators, regardless of the position they're in, substitutes, clinical teachers from the current semester, past semester, anyone that had an interest to further their certification. They might already be a teacher. They might be working as a sub, as I said. They might be working as a paraprofessional. But if they had a barrier because of a certification exam, we said we can help you with that. We will remove that barrier. We will provide you with a study resource. We will provide you with a place to study. Kind of equate it to a workout partner. If I know I'm going to meet my running buddies at 4:42 a.m. because that's when I'm going to meet them, I'm more likely to not hit the snooze button. It's the same thing here, just by providing the resource and the place to come, with some others hold you accountable. And we are happy to say that in the fall alone, in December and January, in a time not only in SAISD, the state of Texas, the nation as a whole, we were able to certify 15 of the 18 that we hired through the certification supports of thinking outside the box. And how can we continue to help you by removing barriers that might be certification-based? So we're continuing to have those classes this May as we speak and also into the June season. Retention incentives, as you all remember, because you passed the compensation plan in July of this past year, we offered a $500 retention incentive to any employee, and I want to stress that, that's regardless of job family. So that's not limited to the teachers. That's not limited to any class. It's to every single employee in San Angelo ISD. So any employee that was with the district in the prior year, in 2021, that returned to serve in the district received a $500 retention incentive in September. Any employee that began with the district this year, '21, '22, and finishes the year will receive a retention incentive in June of 2022. And additionally, any employee, again, any job family, which is super important because it takes every single employee in the capacity in which they serve to best support our students, they, if they finish out with us, will receive a $2,000 retention incentive in July 2023. So those are multiple ways we've looked at retention incentive options for employees that stay and serve in the district. We understand that burnout, not only for teachers specifically, but burnout in all areas of service is real. We've seen it in education, but you've seen it in a number of other industries. There's not many local businesses you can go to visit and give your hard-earned money where you don't see help-wanted signs. So this is not unique just to education, but it is something we are very aware and that we want to retain and hold on to our educators that have been serving with us. So retention is highly important to the district. Leave options falls under this umbrella. Employees receive two separate types of leave when they serve. There are state leave days, and there are local leave days. With state leave days, we have parameters that a local school district cannot address. With local leave, a district does have some flexibility in how you can apply, look at what's approved or not approved with leave options. So I would say since the month of March, I've personally had multiple one-on-one conversations with a little over a dozen employees, that's me personally, along with Mrs. Kathy Jordan, our administrator, who's responsible for leave in our district. And the reason why that's important is we want to listen. We want to receive feedback and take that feedback to present to our Board of Trustees for further consideration on what we can and can't do in terms of leave options for retention possibilities for our employees. And then the last bullet there, re-teacher, or excuse me, retired teacher staffing options. In a time, again, when staff opportunities can create new scenarios for the district, we have hired, we will continue to hire, the most qualified candidate, because that's our responsibility. If that means the most qualified is a retired teacher, we've looked at a number of ways to do that, including part-time and full-time retired teacher staffing options. Just want any interested applicant to know if there's a position of interest to them, to please apply for those positions on our SAISD website. And then in closing, for staff childcare options, as part of our retention strategies, it's been interesting to learn that many of our employees across the district were unaware of our Tiny Texans program. The intention of this program is to first meet the needs of our students, as we're all here, because we serve students. So students who might find themselves as parents, this is the program that we offer them so they can stay connected. It's important that they finish their schooling with the district. But as part of this program that we already have with Tiny Texans, we do have a childcare lottery where for existing staff, they will go in this lottery to have childcare options. As of December 2021, there were approximately 275 families with children on a waiting list. So when you take into consideration the number of those that are potentially SAISD employees, this is something we can offer forward. You serve in our district. We do have a limited number of slots, so I do want to be very clear there. We don't have just an open-ended number. But for the number that we do have available, we are first making those available to our existing staff, for them to have highly reduced tuition, and these staff members would only pay for this option when they, as staff, report to work. And Tiny Texans has been located in conjunction with our Carver Campus for space and facilities. This program will move to Crockett Elementary for the upcoming school year. Just trying to be concise for you guys. Are there any questions that I can help answer at this time?
Mr. Parker, I just, I have a comment and a question, please. Dr. Gomez, I believe it was, first I just want to recognize that, I suppose, our board and our, the work of our human resources department and our campus principals and leadership team, SAISD has taken a proactive approach on this. I believe it was in July 2021 where we announced these retention incentives. Again, as you mentioned, for all staff. Would you recap those retention incentives for all employees? And I believe those were approved in July 2021.
Yes, sir. That is correct. In July 2021, the board did approve for all employees. If they served with the district in 2020 and returned this year, they received a retention incentive in the amount of $500 in September 2021. If they were new to the district for the '21-'22 school year, and they finished the school year with the district, they receive a $500 retention incentive in June of 2022. Additionally, if they served in the district in '21-'22 and remained with the district in July of 2023, they receive an additional $2,000 retention incentive, and that is for any employee serving in any job role.
I was going to ask about the number of staff positions opening. Do you have any idea how many staff positions would be available? How many, I'm sorry, how many child children of staff would be available to go to the Tiny Texans program?
How many are left at this time?
How many will be opening for next year?
Well, some have been, some we've sent applications to. We first have shared to our administrators, and we do that early on, again, when, as you know, there's a process for early notice of retention incentive, and this is a strategy so that we keep the staff that we have onboard. And so we currently have 10 available slots that are going in the lottery, because some of those slots have been filled.
Thank you.
Yes. I also just want to add to that, for our staff that have more than one staff member serving, which we do have that, that is, that is part of it as well. So if we have two in the family serving, those are considerations taken.
As to, I've had questions, my person saying, do we offer retired teachers the option of being able to teach part-time? And do they have to sit out any period of time before they can teach part-time?
So there are different requirements with the teacher retirement system for full-time and part-time employment, and that's usually what is confused. If an educator retires in May, which is typical for most educators that have been in the classroom, then they would be eligible to begin the following school year in a part-time capacity. It's when we go from retiring at the end of the school year and they seek employment in a full-time capacity because of teacher retirement regulations, not because of the school district regulations. What is most important to the district is that we never put any employee in a situation where their annuity could be in jeopardy. They've worked very hard. They've served a full career, and that annuity is very important. So we provide the guidance. We provide the information and how they find the information, but they won't give, teacher retirement system will not speak to us in the same capacity in which they will that individual regarding their annuity. So for part-time, there are less steps that have to be taken than for full-time employment after an individual has retired.
There are ways to, if you're retired, that you can come back full-time. You just need to get with you or the teacher retirement system to find out how to do it.
There are, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Dr. Gomez? Appreciate you bringing us that information. We've been going nearly two hours. We're going to take a quick bachelor's break. We're also going to go for just a few minutes into executive session under 551074 Personnel. And so we should be back here in about 15 minutes, I think. All right, we're back from our break, and also a short executive session, and we took no action, we took no votes, and we're ready to go on with our agenda items. Our next is our consent items. A, consider donations. B, consider physical education and health instruction materials. C, consider allotment and TIC certification. And D, consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year. We have some in our packet. We got some additional ones on our desk tonight. Those are our consent items. Do I hear any motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve consent items A through D with the addition of the addendum on personnel.
We have a motion by Mr. Lehman, a second by Mr. Dindal, on our, to approve our consent items. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment on consent items? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion passes.
Mr. Parker, can I interrupt for just one second on our question for the report while we were working through the agenda? Ms. Gomez, or Dr. Gomez, when we were doing our report on Tiny Texans, I either misheard or maybe somewhere, I got the idea that you said that our spots were first going to administrators prior to teachers and other staff. That is not what I heard, or is that what I heard?
That's not correct. What our spots, of our, of our spots, are educators that have two employees in the system. They first go to employees in that situation, because that means of the household in the family, both parents are serving as educators. So they do not go, administrators aren't eligible for a spot, period.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for April 2022. Dr. McFarland? Is there anything, you have anything on that, or we?
No, as previously discussed at our pre-agenda meeting, the bills, accounts, and financial statements are readily available on the website, including our checkbook, and they've all been looked at and approved or discussed at our last meeting. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve those, as outlined at our pre-agenda.
We have a motion by Dr. Kingman, a second by Mr. Dindal, to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for April 2022. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion passes. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. McFarland for considered 2022-2023 compensation considerations.
Sir, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, good to see you again and visit about compensation consideration. Some options to look at. I presented last week at our pre-agenda meeting information that looked at a consideration and talked about some different options within the budget plan, and going to go back kind of as a, give you a baseline and give you some ideas. Again, as we move through compensation considerations, this is something we do annually, so every year for the board to look at and give us direction, give me as CFO of the district direction as to where you want this plan built into as we build the budget for the upcoming year. And so as we start here, what I presented initially last week was starting with the T family, and that's the family that includes all teachers, counselors, librarians, nurses that are in that category. Currently, our beginning teacher salary scale starts at $45,000, and so this particular consideration would move that starting pay from $45,000 to $47,500. And moving that there, I provided for you last week a couple of items for your own perusal, and that was salary scales in comparison to look over the years. And any of that information, it won't be here in the PowerPoint, but any of that information, I feel free to ask, and I can provide again those salary scales in comparison to how they look over from year zero to year 30, as well as some of the information about the other families that we'll talk about here tonight. But initially, starting with the T family, the majority, probably about 55% of our employees that we're talking about are in this family, and that would move that starting pay scale up. The pay range boxes would be adjusted within that pay scale so that as a first-year teacher or a zero-year teacher, as you move up to year one from year zero, that would adjust with the new scale, but the teacher moving up from year one to year two would also adjust as would be appropriate with the new scale in place. And so as you can see, that would not just adjust for zero, one-year teachers, that would adjust every teacher on the scale. And so we would adjust that appropriately to make that adjustment. And so when you're looking at that, we're also looking to ensure that there's a minimum of 3% within this raise for people in that family if moving that adjustment doesn't get them there, and so ensuring that 3% is there. The total cost, when you run estimates on this, looks like it would be a total cost of about $3.3 million to the general fund budget for the district. As you move for the other families, and just as a reminder, when we talk about all other job families, this includes the administrative family, the informational technology family, clerical family, manual trades group. So that's what all the other families, again, this, this group of employees currently is about, would equate to about 45% of our population of staff, with about 100, or 55 being in that T family and about 45 being in all the other families combined here. What we would do with them, because, again, we don't build an individual minimum midpoint maximum for every, every year of service on the T-scale family, we just do an average there. However, in the groups that are being considered here, we do have a specific job listing line item that we do have a minimum midpoint and maximum, and so what we would do with that is move that, adjust those boxes by 2%, and then propose here that this would be a 3% raise based off that movement off the new boxes, and then you give the 3% raise there for all members in that job family based off the midpoint. By the way, if you have any questions, again, feel free to ask as I go. Don't feel like you can't interrupt. you can't interrupt, I'm here to answer questions.
So there's a 2% box change and then a 3% raise?
Correct, that's the first thing we do is move the boxes, and so really, there's a new midpoint that we're saying we're building the 3% off of, yes. By the way, and one of the reasons you do that is because if you don't move those boxes first, it makes everything crunch and, and you have people start to reach their maximum more quickly than normally would be. It, it just makes your, your boxes not really work that well, and it puts everybody kind of crunched together instead of more spread throughout that, that pay range. Okay, so doing that, the base cost of this recommendation is approximately about $620,000 for that raise applied to all members of that family.
Dr. McFarland?
Yes, sir.
Manor jet real quick.
You bet.
And you provided us this information in the pre-agenda, but the manual trades, that consists of maintenance and operations.
Yes.
Custodial services.
Transportation, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Food services, yes, sir. Which is child nutrition, don't forget that Ms. Helms is in the audience tonight, so just as a reminder for you. Okay, so approximately 3.92 when you put the, the T-family and all, all families together in this, about 3.92 is what you're looking for to the budget in addition on the general fund accumulation there. Now another consideration, this is something we would continue to do, is offer a no-cost option for employees. So as employees get options for healthcare, we always want to provide an option that is an option for them to be an employee only and have no cost monthly for health insurance. And so what we do is as the plan rolls around, TRS care comes around, and we look at those rates, what would it cost us to, to offer the lowest-cost option for that employee to be totally free on accepting that health plan and it not costing them anything monthly? And so for us right now, currently, that would be 380 is what we would supply in the upcoming year, I should say, for all employees. If they don't choose to be on that lowest health plan option that would be free, they can choose higher options, and that 380 would apply to that monthly rate for them, so they would have that minus what they would owe on their monthly rate. Questions? Dr. Detloff, anybody?
So Dr. McFarland? If I'm, or any educator or employee has their entire family on our, on the TRS active care system, and let's just, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but let's just paint the scenario that it's $1,000, then I would take that 380 towards that $1,000.
Right.
And I would be responsible for the difference.
That is correct, yes, sir.
In addition to the, the points you're about to make, 500 additional dollars that we pay in December.
Yes, and so.
To assist them.
Yeah, that'll come up also. Any other questions on this point? 380 is, is applied, and like Mr. Lehman had just mentioned, we would continue to provide a $500 insurance supplement to all employees of the district, and that would be payable in their December paychecks. So $500, we call it an insurance supplement, how they use it is, is their usage point, but that's what we provide it as, and, and they can use it as needed. So $500 additional as in December for employees that are here with us and part of the insurance And again, that's something the district has done for years, and I don't even know the number of years, but certainly way before I ever came aboard, and, and so it's a, a good benefit for all employees. As, as we look at, one of the other things that we have talked about, and Dr. Gomez, as she was up here, gave a great explanation about what we had done proactively last year to try to have retention for our staff and, and also recruiting efforts also, but retention being a big thing, we talked about here adding retention and signing bonuses. And so what, what this would look like in the new year coming up would be anybody that would, has been with us to end this year, and then starts with us and is with us in September of 2022, as we start the 2223 school year, would receive a $500 retention bonus for returning back to us after this, the end of this school year. Okay? As a reminder, what Dr. Gomez says, those employees that end the year with us are already getting a $500 bonus in June, and if they return with us in September, don't, don't give us a resignation sometime in June or July and return with us, and they're here in September, all those employees would get another $500 bonus for staying with the district and coming back for another school year. Additionally, that's all, that's the current employees now. Now also what we would talk about is providing a $1,000 signing bonus for all new staff, not just teachers, but all members of the, the families, the T-family, the manual trades, the clerical, all of those families included, child nutrition included, Ms. Helms, so all of those families still included in the plan here. And what we would do with those is instead of paying that out as a $1,000 upfront signing bonus, it would, we would utilize it in part of our not just recruitment but retention, and that you start with us in September, you're going to get 500 there, and, or you start with us in September, you get 500 in December if you're with us, and then the other 500 of that in June at the end of the school year. So that's where that 5,000, or 500 for twice would kick in for those new employees. And again, that's all new staff members that we hired from teachers, manual trades, bus drivers, child nutrition, custodians, all members. And then I just have an asterisk by that last one, because that's something that Dr. Gomez had mentioned, this is not new, but that's just a reminder that as we began July of 2021, we introduced and adopted a plan that would say if you started with us in September of 2021, and you're with us through July 2020, I'm saying, I'm, I'm reading that wrong, right? No, that's printed wrong, I'm, I'm, I'm saying it right, it's printed wrong though, because if they were here with us in September of 2021, and they end the year with us next July 23, then they would get $2,000. So that was an outlooking reach of extension for not just looking for the upcoming year, but looking two years out, as we set that retention, so I apologize for the misprint on the slide there, but that is for those who started with us last September 2021, here with us now, remain with us, next year through July 2023, they would get that $2,000. Okay? Questions about anything on that slide? Now the cost of the new bonuses would be approximately, the new bonuses, that would be for the returning staff and for the new staff, would be about $1 million as an estimate. And then the cost of the end of the year 2023, $2,000 bonus would be approximately $3 million to the district. And all of these bonuses that we're talking about here would be funded through SRR1 and SRR2 funding that the district has received as a usable use for those funds. Questions?
We've not wanted to, SRR2 and 3.
Yeah, because we used, yes, sir, because SRR1 was pretty much used up last year.
So you might remind everybody, we know what SRR is, but the general public might, so you might tell her, just give a real brief synopsis of what SRR is.
You bet, SRR stands for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Care is what it's, it's provided for, and that was something, so there's been three SRR program fundings that came out of the federal government, that's why Mr. Dindel was asking about, is that not SRR1? So that started in the year of, see my dates have been bad up here, so 2020 in May, when we had the pandemic and we didn't finish school, that's when SRR1 came out, and we utilized that all the way through last year. And then they kicked out SRR2, or SRR3 actually came out next, and then SRR2, but those are the two we're utilizing right now that we're carrying over and, and still providing for us additional funds. Okay, a total budget impact that we're talking about to the general fund when considering all salary increases, so take out the bonuses and whatnot, because those are all of the SRR funding, federal funds, would be approximately $3.3 million for the district. And again, I'd mentioned before in the pre-agenda meeting, you know, I had a slide on here that said about 3.9 is the difference, or would be the cost when you apply all, all the families together. However, I'm coming up with 3.3 because as those new TRS rates came in, the 380 actually reduces the amount that we would contribute than what it previous was for this year, so that would save us that other about $600,000 to reduce that total fund difference to about Then lastly, just for future considerations, as a, and I know we mentioned this last week, and there were questions out of it, so I'll feel free to, to talk about this. One of the things as, as we present this is that I want everybody to understand on the board that there, we're in a good, good financial position right now with where money is, because what the SRR funding has allowed us to do has to be innovative in plans about, and give us options as a district as to how we want to utilize that money. And one of the things we've done as a district has been planning for supplanting that money, the SRR funding into our regular fund, and then holding back some of the regular fund money into general fund, fund balance and building that up. That has been happening, and it gives us some options on how we want to utilize those funds down the line, whether we want to use that for facility corrections or, or new facilities, or, or utilizing that to, to deal with what we're experiencing in funding loss moving forward, because the, the reality of our funding loss moving forward is, when I first came to the district a couple of years ago, the district's student enrollment was about 14,500, and our average daily attendance was about 95%. Currently, for this year, at the PIM snapshot, we're about 13,800 students, so about 700 student different loss there over those two-year periods. And then when you look at also the attendance rate of those lesser students, they're attending at a lesser rate, so our average attendance is closer to 92, between the 92 and 93%. So those two factors, when you put together, look like what normally had been for the district when I got here, about $125 million revenue operating budget is looking like as we move forward to about 117 to 118 million based off those numbers. And that will be more of what you see as the revenue flow, starting for sure in '24, '25, knowing what we know today on today's date, without knowing if there's other hold harmlessness or other things that the, the TEA or federal government might put in for the accountability. The salary considerations that we presented here, so I mention this because about 122 million is what we'd be looking at as a expenditure budget when combined with the rest of the budget, if you add these salary increases in. And we have additional funding that's coming through right now with a hold harmless from this past year, as well as additional SRR funds that are still there that we can utilize to help supplant or supplement the, the current year's budget on revenue flow. But it's good for you to know, moving forward, after you get through about '24 or '23, '24, and then you get to year '24, '25, that's when that SRR funding will drop off and, and as, like I said, current information as to what we know now. Questions that I can answer?
I have just a quick question, maybe my ignorance, but if you're saying our revenue, we can plan on 117 to 118 million in the future on revenue, but adding the salary increase, we're going to have expenses of 122 million, which is a 3, 4 million deficit, that, I know our SRR funds can help us with that for a while, but is, we are, are we thinking that we're either going to have to decrease expenses or increase revenues to get that to be balancing somewhere in the future?
So again, looking at the, the current numbers of what we know now, I would not project, let's just, let's just jump one year ahead, going into next school year, that 118, let's say 117 to 18, you can add 3 million onto that as revenue for next year, so we're closer in the 121 range just for next year based on the hold harmless that we know we're getting now for next year. That's already been declared by the Texas Education Agency, so we are aware of that. They're going to hold us harmless for the attendance, the low attendance, not just us, but the statewide thing, so they're holding districts harmless for the attendance rate that you've had for six weeks, number one, through six weeks, number four. And so when you put that into the formula for us, that's going to equate to about $3 million. However, they won't give you that until the next fiscal year is when it'll hit, hit your account and, and what they'll have and what they'll be supplying you with in, in foundation school program payments that the state pays you through. And so if next year, if we were at 122, it would be about a million over in that revenue flow. So that's additional funding there, but going back to how do you sustain it and get back to where we need to be, it's going to depend on a few things, Mr. Parker, it's going to depend on what the district's decisions are moving forward with how they utilize that SRR money, and because there is a good portion of SRR money that will be available that we have been supplanting, and it will be supplanted as, or planned to be supplanted next year. And so you'll have a good amount of money that you can extend those number of years from 20, in the '24, '25, that you can extend yourself off of, how can I get the district back into that $118 million flow? And part of that's going to be attrition, part of that's going to be looking at our staffing and how it aligns with our, our student population, and allowing attrition to take place over those next few years. But the unknown, we don't know also, is what student enrollment going to do, because it could drop off more, or you could regain some. So that's again, unknown at this point in time. But I do think there is some sustainability in utilizing, when you, when you plan on attrition happening, and then looking at where you're, how you could cut some expenses as we've been, something we've been pursuing and looking at that, that the board has had interest in, like with transportation and different things, is those are questions that have come up, and we've been studying and looking at, so there's some different ways to cut some spending. But ultimately, you're, we're going to have to have attrition happen to align our personnel with our revenue flow for student population.
And, and Dr. McFarland, let me extend on that, and feel free to edit my comments if my math is off. Would you give a, a quick recap, or my familiarity with school districts in Texas, which is about 1,020 school districts, the majority of school districts in Texas operate between 80% and 88% of their overall budget are wrapped up in personnel?
Yes.
So somewhere between 80 and 88%. Ours, I believe, is about 85%, but that comment might need, need editing.
We're a little lower than that, but we're around 83, 84-ish.
So, and I believe that now we look at a personnel unit as about 60,000, and that may have gone up recently too, but about 60,000 per personnel unit?
Depending on what family that's coming out of.
True.
And, and so where Dr. Detloff is coming up with that number is when we consider the salary cost of a, of an employee unit, it's not just their actual salary, but we consider all the benefits and what we pay in the Texas retirement system and those different benefits that do come out of the district coffers to pay for that salary. So if you're at a teacher that, that's like at 48,000, yes, it's closer to 60,000 that we would consider a unit for that teacher based off the benefits and things that we're paying.
So from an enrollment perspective, if, and we don't know what attendance or our enrollment will do, but let's say that we have a reduction of 70 personnel units in the teacher family to support our attrition of, of students, and that's 4.2 million roughly, if that was a teacher family? So as Dr. McFarland was indicating, if we do have a reduction in our personnel units, then the district has a much greater chance of sustainability in the future, but we would have to reduce those personnel units, because again, that is the majority of a, a district's overall budget.
Right.
And just to go on that, Dr. Detloff, but I mean, part of the goal of the SRR money is to keep our employment levels high currently to deal with the fallout of the COVID, learning loss. So like the fact that we are running a budget that has high teacher ratio to students currently, that's the whole entire goal of the SRR monies. currently, that's the whole entire goal of the ESAR monies in, I mean, in order to allow for that, to regain that learning loss. I mean, so we are, I understand, I mean, but that, is that correct in the understanding of everyone else's understanding of the ESAR money?
Sort of.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say certainly that's a large, a percentage of the cost, the expectation for that, of how we use that money is to catch, make sure we catch kids up. And that, if you're catching kids up and, you know, we had a number of presentations by principals and every one of them's talking about instructional specialists, you know, people like that. So that is a personnel unit that we could justify using ESAR money for. The other thing I wanted to, and if you don't mind me piggyback, piggybacking on that, but the ESAR money, when we're giving retention bonuses and things like that, and everybody knows that salaries are a recurring cost, but when you're giving retention bonuses, that's just a one-time cost.
Correct.
Unless you decide to do it again. So, you know, that's fits perfectly into how you should use ESAR money because you're using that to increase, keep teachers, keep employees and do things like that. And at the same time, three years from now, if we don't need that employee, then we won't have a recurring cost. If we raise their salary five or 6%, then that's a recurring cost.
I would, yeah. And I would say this district, and just, this is my opinion now, I'd say the district is in a great place for where we are with ESAR money because the ESAR money, as you've talked about, Dr. Kingman and, and Mr. Lehman, it's different uses. But ultimately, it was to deal with whatever trouble your district dealt with based on COVID and the pandemic and what it did to your district. And what it did to our district is gave us a lot lower enrollment and a lower attendance rate. And that ESAR money is a vehicle there now that's available as we supplant and do those things to use to say, we've got a fiscal cliff coming where ESAR money is no longer being supplied.
Right.
But with the amount that we have and will have placed aside in fund balance, that could be used to give you additional years to, to see where is the flow going to be because you never know. What if enrollment went up, you know, next year significantly or the following year significantly? Those would be new players in the game. You know, what, what you're looking at right now would not be at all even questioned if we were still at that 14,500 student. That wouldn't even be talked about because it's sustainable there. But if those numbers don't change in enrollment and, and attendance rate, then you have cushion to allow yourself to ease off of where we are in the, with the staffing in regard to student enrollment and get back into alignment. Because that's what that ESAR money was for, to help you catch up, but also to help you deal with fiscal cliff issues. That's something that TEA, matter of fact, had seminars on about how do you avoid the fiscal cliff? How do you, how do you utilize that money to do that? And this district's in a perfect place to be able to do that if needed, if next year's course or the following year's course doesn't show us better enrollment and whatnot. The good news is because that money's there, you don't have to do it in one year. You don't have to say, we've got to cut people. It's not attrition. Again, attrition is allowing people to resign and not replacing positions. That's not going to people and giving them pink slips and saying you don't have a job. So because of that, that, that budget that's in there, that balance that's in there with the ESAR fund and the cushion, that gives you the ability to not have to do those type of actions.
And Dr. McFarland and Dr. Gomez, connecting to the, just the, the attrition comment with staff, for many years, we're probably at about a 15% attrition rate with staff. So we, we will typically lose between 130 and 160 personnel units anyway. So connecting to Dr. McFarland's comments, you know, that's not a pink slip or anything else. There's a natural attrition to, to fill these positions or, or not fill them.
That's right. And then it would be the choice of the district to look at prioritizing which roles get filled and how we need to accommodate that for different grade levels and, and class sizes and things like that. Anything else I can add from, or answer from podium?
Anybody else have questions? I know, Bill, you had some, some information that you had discussed with Dr. McFarland earlier this week.
Sure. Dr. McFarland, there's a couple of, of pay families that I think are struggling right now, pay family 400 and pay family 500, which is the clerical paraprofessional job family and also the manual trades job family. I was doing some research, maybe an increase of, instead of 3% on those families to 5%, I think is a possible addition to the budget of about $270,000.
Right. Yeah. And, and so what Mr. Dendel's running those numbers off, I gave him some estimates off looking at 1% raises in certain classes. So he's been, he's been doing some behind the scenes mathematician work and, and putting things together. So I would say he's pretty accurate in what he's suggesting there, yes.
So I think that my proposal might be in order tonight too. So for those two job families, 400 and 500.
So do we need a motion? Is that what we need?
If y'all would like to move forward with adopting something with compensation, yes, sir.
So, so I think the only...
The only change is that bullet proof, that bullet, second bullet point.
Right.
3% for families 100 and 300 and then 5% for families about 400 and 500.
Right. And then I do have, I do, do want to make sure that we make a comment concerning the T family. We were, and thanks for, for, for providing this to us as well, but, and I don't have the 20, 2020, 2021 teacher pay scale, but I know the starting salary was 41.5.
Correct.
And so you could take that down. Usually it's 3 to $500 per year based on how long they've been with us. But that's where we were two years ago. Last year, we went to 45,000 and your proposal this year takes us to 47,500. So, and, and don't get me wrong, I, I wish we could pay teachers a lot more than that. You've outlined where we stand financially pretty well, Dr. McFarland. And I think our board fully understands that we need to be as fiscally responsible as possible. But the last couple of years, we've done what we can to try to catch up to areas of the state that we use as guidelines or districts that we compare ourselves to, comparison districts. And we're getting closer to them all the time. So we've made, in, in the last couple of years, we've made significant progress in that area. And when we start out hiring someone at a higher level, then everyone's affected by that. Everyone in the, in the teacher, every teacher's affected by that and their salary goes up. So even though I would like to do more, I think the last couple of years, we've made a significant in, increase in, in trying to get our teachers up to what we considered the standard pay ought to be. And hopefully we can address that again next year. But right now, in two years, they've gone up, you know, if you go up 6,000 on a, on a 41,000 base, you know, you're looking at plus a 2% raise within the scale, then you're looking at, you know, you're looking at, this year it's 4, 4.6%. Last year it was a little bit more than that. So you're looking at the last two years, we've, we've gone up 12 to 13%, you know, well, not that, about 10% for our teachers, everybody in the, in that level. So I feel that that's as much as we can do at this particular time. And I also thank Dr. Kingman for making, or Bill for making the motion about the other salary groups. You know, when you talk about some of those pay scales are 12 to $20, you know, when you're talking about giving them a 3% raise, it's not as significant as 5%. And I, I would like to give more than 5%. And I thought, I know I speak for our board, a lot of us would. But one of the primary responsibilities of, of a board members that make sure that we have a conservative approach to how the district stands financially. And I think our board has done a good job of that through the years. So I feel really good about that as well. So that's the comments that I would make. And the other thing, I think every year, I don't know that I can say this without exception, but I've been on the board for 21 years and I can't remember a year that we, we didn't have some money left over at the end of the year versus what we budgeted. So we budget to full employment, you know, even though we don't have full employment. We would like to have full employment, wouldn't we, Dr. Gomez? But we don't. So when we budget to full employment, most of the time we're, you know, 2% to 3% off that. So we have a couple of $3 million worth of cushion built into nearly every budget we have just based on the fact that we budget to full employment and we don't necessarily have that, you know, so.
Now the onus is on Dr. Gomez to get people hired.
That's right. That's right. That's right. And she's, she's going to do that. So I feel confident. So any other, I'm sorry.
I don't know if there's other comments. I don't even know, somebody's going to have to correct me in a minute whether we've got a motion in a second, but I will just...
I'll second the motion that Dr., or Mr. Dendel outlined with the change to the 5% for paid groups, 400 and 500.
Well, and I, my comments are similar to Lanny's. Do all our staff deserve more? Would I like to pay them more? Yes. Are we looking at an unlimited source that we can pay more? That's what I was pointing out when I said we're, we're going to be counting on some things that not have a deficit. We are projecting, I mean, just looking at what you, what I outlined a few minutes ago, we're looking at 117, 118 dollar, 117, 118 million revenue with expenses of 122 million. And we think that's going to balance out. But the point is, we, we just don't have an unlimited amount to say we're going to give more, give 5 million more for salaries. We have to be good stewards of that. So we can't just play with this money and on a hope and a prayer that everything's going to come out. We, we have some things that we're going to be looking at. I'm just talking for the board right now. You know, how can we increase our revenues? And some of the board members and I have been doing some studies on that and we're finding out that some of our districts around us are receiving 500 to $1,000 more per student than we are. If we got $500 more per student right now, that would be around at least 7 million more dollars that we would have that we could give for salaries that we're not getting. And we're going to be looking into that of how do we get our revenues more up, more per student to, to match with some of the other districts that, and we're talking about state funding. So I think we're, we've asked Dr. Detloff and he's getting something set up for us on a training and have persons that are specialists in school finance that are going to come talk to us and we're going to see if there's anything that we can do as a district to, to get that number up so we'll have more money that we can use. The second thing that I, that's been mentioned here, it's not like we have all this money and we're just trying to be cheap with paying it out for salaries because my training was that you really try to not spend more than 80% of your general, general budget on salaries. And we're at 83, 84% right now. So we are definitely spending the, the great, great majority of our money on salaries. So for those that think maybe that we are not being as generous as we could be, we're being as generous as we can be with the money that we have. So again, I think I'm speaking for the rest of the board. We would like to be more generous with the salary increases, but we're really limited on how much more we can do. So is there any, anything else that any other board member wants to comment on this before we ask for public comment?
Obviously, thanks, Dr. McFarland, for, for pressing those numbers out into different percentages for you, for helping me this weekend understand how each, how each family and how each, all the budget goes together. But thank you very much for that.
All right. Is there any public comment before our call of vote?
I have a vote.
Yes, Mr. Basetti, just be sure to state your name again for the record.
All right. My name is Virgil Pacetti. I'm a student in your district, specifically with these ESAR funds. Back in April 8th, I put in a FOIA request for the ESAR funds and I was not given any of the stuff I asked for. I was looking at the information provided by TA and it said that, you know, all the stakeholders should be asked about this, which would be the board, the administration, the teachers, and specifically the parents. And I feel like with these ESAR funds that the parents had little or no input. Most parents don't even know what the ESAR funds are. Another one of the things that the TA said is that when it specifically comes to ESAR funds, that where and how the funds are being allocated, that it should be readily available for any parent that came up and asked for it. I asked in, on April 8th, my FOIA request was, you know, what campuses are receiving the money? Itemized list of ESAR funds, who's authorizing these funds? And if you want to see, I don't, I only get five minutes, but if y'all want to see the responses that were given to me, they were not readily available. The district is not coming forth with that information. And I feel like for some reason, the district doesn't want to let the parents know where that money's going. And, and that really saddens me because I think as a stakeholder, the parents should know where the money's going. And I think I read something here on ESAR 2 and 3 that there's a specific code for where you spend the money. So is that true? Is there like a 260 code or a 261 code? McFarland, nothing? No? Well, from what I read from TA, and maybe I need to just contact them and find out, maybe I'm mistaken, maybe I'm not a stakeholder, maybe I'm not entitled to know. But it said that it should be easily coded and that anybody in, in finance should be able to tell us where those funds are going. And I feel like with that FOIA request, I should have been able to see ESAR 1. And you know, I do have concerns with ESAR 2 and 3, you know, because when I saw those funds, you know, they said it's specifically for elementary, secondary students. You know, one of my, my son is one of those students that came in behind. And, you know, I could see giving the bonuses to the T scale. I don't see how, you know, I always see things as value-added and non-value-added. The teachers touch the students every day. They teach the students. They're interacting with the students. The money needs to go there to help support the teachers. When I asked for my son, hey, he's struggling here, it's like, well, we don't have any extra teachers. We don't have this, but we have all this money to give to people that aren't even in the T class that don't interact with the students. So, you know, as a stakeholder, I feel like I should have, you know, we should have been brought into that more often. It's just, you know, we're throwing around millions of dollars here and you're going to vote on it, but I can't see what the money is going. I can't see where ESAR 1 went. And it's, it's just, I don't know why there's this black curtain that the parents aren't allowed to see past. And it's, it's just very concerning. And I would hope as the board, that would concern you too. And I know you're probably going to go ahead and vote the way that y'all have already previously discussed, but I would hope in the future, especially when it comes to these funds, you know, and if you look in there, what some of the funds are supposed to go to, I mean, you should be seeing light items for helping kids that are behind, not just giving out random, you know, pay raises or, well, not pay raises because those are forever, but, you know, one-time stipends or whatever. It should be for the people that are involved with the students, you know? And it, it really does concern me that there is no transparency. And that's my comment.
Well, I can comment this time because this is an agenda item.
Oh, thank you, sir.
No, you can sit down. I'm not, I'm not getting in a dialogue, but I can comment. Out of the $4 million that we're talking about, that we were, that'll be sustainable cost, 3.3 million is going to the teachers. Just what you're talking about. It's not, that's, that's not going to custodial. That's not going to maintenance. That's going to the teachers. When we say the T family, that's the teachers. If you had been coming to our meetings the last few months, we've had reports from every principal in our district and every principal we've talked to, they need interventionists. They need persons to help to catch these kids up. We have been looking, looking, and that is the problem. There isn't anybody. That's why Dr. Kingman says, all right, I know you need more people other than more staff that we can't find because we can't even fill slots that we already need people in. What else can we do for you? I agree with you. If we could hire more people that could... you. If we could hire more people that could help these children after hours or whatever, or even one-on-one, that would be wonderful. They're not out there or they're not, every district in the state is looking for the same, same person. So we are looking for those things. We're giving, we've mentioned it tonight, that four million of the ESER funds went to bonuses for teachers, okay, for retention bonuses to try to keep teachers here so that we don't lose more. So you know how to get in touch with me or you can find me online. Send me your request of what you're looking for as far as ESER. I will try to help you find what's happening with the ESER funds if that's your concern because, but I can assure you that most of the ESER fund that I know about is going right where you're talking about, to the classrooms, to the teachers. And that's what we're, what it's supposed to be used for. And that's what we're trying to use it for, is to catch students up, to try to help our teachers and retain our teachers. So I, I understand your, your frustration. I don't know the things that have been going on with you because some of those things get handled by, when you file a Freedom of Information Act, that goes to our school attorneys and that doesn't come to us. So I'll try to help you from behind the scenes to see if I can help you with that. Okay? But thank, thank you for your comment.
Well, I understand. I understand what you're saying. Well, it's, it's all right. You're not at the microphone, so they can't hear you right now. So I understand it. Lanny, did you have any other comment?
I, I just want to come in defense of some of our other district employees. You know, bus driver makes a pretty big impression, the way he treats that child on the bus. Cafeteria worker makes a pretty good impression on how they treat that child in the food service line. So I know how important a teacher is, but I can think of at least three or four people in my, fifty years ago when I was in school, sixty years ago, that made an impression on me that were someone other than a teacher. So when we employ two thousand people, you have to take care of all of them. And the point I tried to make earlier is that we've gone overboard to try to take care of our teachers and done all we can in that area. And, and now we're, we have to take care of the others as well because we have an, an employee family that cares about kids. Our teachers certainly care about kids, but there's other members of our employee team that have an equal passion for making sure that kids are taken care of. So.
As well as our custodial staff may not have a direct impact on a student in their classroom, but if that classroom is not clean, then that, that student, it will have a direct impact on that student moving forward. I know during the, the pandemic, our custodial staff worked significantly overtime to try to keep our classrooms as sterile and as, as clean as possible. And, and beyond that, as far as the transmission rate in schools was probably the lowest that it could be. If you're out in the community, you're much more likely to catch some sort of COVID symptoms than if you were in school. And that's actually factual. They can show the, the percentages of, of the number of kids that were catching COVID versus the, the kids that were, were outside the, in, in the environment with their parents. So it's pretty valuable.
And our food service has been providing free breakfast and free lunch for every student, which is important. And our maintenance department is having to make sure we keep the electricity on and keep the water lines and the restrooms and everything that breaks and getting it back into service so our kids can go to class the next day. So it is a full team effort all across to make sure that every child gets what he needs to do as best he can. And I, I agree with that. So, all right. We've had a motion. We've had a second. We've had a board discussion. Is there any other public comment? All right. Then I'm going to call this for a vote that, as to the compensation package that's been presented here by Dr. McFarland with the amendment that Mr. Dindel made as to five percent to the four hundred family and the five hundred family. I think that's the, that was the only change, wasn't it? So with that, I'll call a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. The motion passes. Okay, I'm, I'll find it. Give me a second. All right. Now we have Ms. Helms. Consider approval of bids for Child Nutrition Department for 2022 and 2023.
Good evening, Dr. Detloff, Mr. Parker, and members of the board. I'm here tonight to ask you to approve our dairy products bid. There are some significant changes to our bid that I wanted to make you aware of. First of all, milk is a required component for the National School Lunch Program. Second of all, it's a hundred thousand dollars more for next year than this year. We've been advised by the dairy industry that there are fifteen trucks for every one driver. So in order to retain drivers for the dairy, the milk delivery, they've had to raise their prices. So that just can help you understand some of the issues we're facing with supply chain issues. Do you have any questions on this particular?
And Ms. Helms, we chose, the recommendation is for the bid that does not include the non-escalator clause, correct?
They both have an escalator.
All of them have. Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
So rough math.
I would have jumped on it very fast if it did not.
Rough math, that's about a twenty percent increase over prices from last year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Somewhere in there. On a one-year, on a one-year average, maybe twenty percent up.
One year.
In your, sorry, one more question. In your past history, what have you seen? Maybe three or four percent?
Maybe three or four percent. And as we were building this year's budget, we were aware that the costs were going to be up. And we put ten percent into our estimated budget that we were going to hand in to Dr. McFarland. Going to have to revise that.
Dr. McFarland, are we going to have milk this year?
There's some unknowns.
Any other questions? We discussed some of this with you last week and I, we thought it would be important for our stakeholders to hear these increases so they would understand what's going on. And so do we have a motion to approve? Or there's anything, anything else that wants to be discussed?
I'd move for the, the approval of the purchase of the dairy products for the Child Nutrition, Nutrition Department for the 22, 23 school year as presented by Ms. Helms.
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion by Mr. Dindel, a second by Mr. Lehman to recommend approval of the bids that were presented by Ms. Helms. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? All right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right. Ms. Helms, you're up again on the, for bid for school year direct delivery product and high-volume items.
So this bid is approximately five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars higher than this same time last year. So I just have a few notes to add to that. We still have another bid to tabulate, which is our warehouse bid, and I'll be presenting that in June. We're reviewing strategies to try to keep our meal prices at their current rates because we know it would be very difficult for our families if we had to raise the price of meals. So we are trying some different strategies in addition to this. Currently, we are purchasing everything we can at today's prices where we have storage space. We've grabbed some commodity pounds from other districts that may not have used all their commodity pound. And we are unsure what we're going to be able to get off of this bid. Supply chain issues are not stabilizing. Manufacturers are telling us they're in for another year of substitution or, and availability issues. We also have a clause in this bid that we can purchase. We may need to purchase more or less of the items. So one of our strategies will be, and I'll present more of that at the June meeting, is to select the items that are on the lower cost and that make it affordable.
I don't remember what you said last meeting. Maybe I'm dreaming, but the, the free breakfast and free lunches, a lot of that's been paid for or we've got reimbursed from federal funding. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And right now, you're, or did you say you weren't certain whether that funding was going to continue or whether it's, it's definitely not going to continue?
Currently, we're under waivers where our children get free lunch, every child, regardless of our eligibility. So those waivers end the end of June. So that's a huge concern to us because if we were able to get that continued reimbursement for all students at the free rate, I think we'll be okay. Congress has a bill introduced, but it hasn't moved very far called Support Kids Not Red Tape Act. And so if that passes, it would extend our waivers another year and give us time, give the Child Nutrition Department and our families time to recover from the supply chain issues and the inflation that we're all experiencing.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'd forgotten that, but I knew that there was another element that I thought hadn't been mentioned yet. All right. Is there any other board discussion on the bid for direct delivery produce and high-volume items?
Just to reinforce, Ms. Helms, we talked about this last week. Items as simple as cereal are insured. Demand is that. Won't you tell me about that?
Extremely short, yes. So this week, every Monday, just, this is just one vendor. We work with Cisco. This week, today, usually about three or four, we get the email for to approve substitutions. Today, we had eighty-five substitutions or outages at almost every location was affected. For example, what I talked with Mr. Dindel last week about was Cisco wanted to send bulk cereal instead of cereal in a bulk. So to some people, that's not a big deal. To us, that's huge because our breakfast goes to the classroom at the elementary level.
Cancer.
So I can't get bowls and I can't get spoons. So bulk cereal certainly wouldn't help us out. So we're having to look at creative solutions and, and we have to tell the vendors no sometimes. So last Monday, I said, no, you can't send us bulk cereal. We can't use it. Just wanting.
Yeah, and I couldn't even find corn dogs on here either.
No. If it has a stick, it's very, in very short supply.
Right.
That includes pancake on a stick, which is one of our kids' favorite breakfasts.
Right. I saw that too. Pancake on a stick is, is in question. So that's, it's crazy times.
It's crazy times. I mean, who thought that we wouldn't be able to get cereal?
Thank you, Ms. Helms.
All right. Any other discussion or anyone want to make a bid, make a bid?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve our direct delivery produce and high-volume items as outlined in RFP number 2316 to use Cisco West Texas for a total cost of one million, eight hundred and fifty thou, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and forty-eight cents.
No, I didn't hear you down here on the right. It was down here on the left. I've got a motion by Dr. Kingman and a second by Ms. Arroyo and a tie with Mr. Gallegos also to approve this motion. And is there any other board discussion? Is there any public discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes.
I also want to express my appreciation for how hard you've worked on compensation, see the time that you put into it. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Henry?
Want to thank you all for having me here tonight. Tonight, I bring to you RFQ 22-006 Lakeview Stadium scoreboard replacement. During the 21, 22 football season, it became apparent that the scoreboard at Lakeview Stadium needed to be replaced. Not only were the parts becoming harder and harder to find, but the functionality of the scoreboard has not been able to keep up with the use of the field. Currently, we are using the field for middle school football games, soccer games, and we also rent out the stadium to other, for other uses. Last year, we had a soccer game at the stadium and we could not actually get the scoreboard. It doesn't have the functionality to run the amount of minutes that you have to run to have a, a soccer game. So they had to, instead of doing two halves, they had to do four quarters. We're also having an extremely difficult time trying to find replacement parts for the scoreboard due to the fact that it was manufactured sometime in the late forties, early fifties. A request for quotes was sent to buy board vendors who specialize in this type of work. We received two quality submissions, one from Daktronics and one from Spectrum. The scoring criteria was applied and Daktronics was not only the highest score, but also the lowest bid. The administration recommends that we contract with Daktronics for a turnkey purchase and installation of a new scoreboard at Lakeview Stadium, total cost of forty-one thousand, fifty-seven dollars, which also includes a three thousand dollar owner's contingency for items unforeseen once construction begins. Y'all have any questions over that?
Jason, I did have a question. Maybe it's my math, but when I look at the bid, Daktronics shows forty thousand, three thirty-six and Spectrum's forty thousand, one eighty-one. And then it says an additional cost for a 25-second clock. And Daktronics is forty-seven, forty, forty-seven hundred and sixty dollars and Spectrum's fifty-five, seventy-five, but the forty-seven, sixty's not included in the forty-one thousand, oh fifty-seven.
Correct. The 25-second clocks, we actually currently have Daktronics 25-second clocks. And the way that we bid that out is we let the vendors, if their system could connect to that, then we didn't have to purchase that piece. And since Daktronics.
So my math wasn't a problem?
Not at all. You are a hundred percent right.
Thanks.
And if we approve this tonight, we can have it in place by fall?
That's, that's what we intend on. They have a 12-week lead time. We intend, yeah. Shell would say otherwise, I bet. But they're saying that we could have it in 12 weeks. We intend on, once you approve, if you approve this, we'll cut the PO tomorrow and they say we'll have it. Games don't start in Lakeview Stadium until mid-August and that's, we're going to, it'll be close, but that's what we're intending to have it before that mid-August.
Yeah, I feel once the season starts, it's used Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and some varieties. So it's.
It gets a lot more use than people.
In addition to soccer games, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation to contract with Daktronics for turnkey purchase and installation of a new scoreboard for Lakeview Stadium at a cost of forty-one thousand and fifty-seven dollars.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Lehman, a second by Mr. Dindel. Is there any other board discussion? Any public comment? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Gomez, you're up and your guest that's been waiting here patiently is still here and awake. And so I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. In regards to student and staff wellness, mental health care and emotional stability support. SISD district leaders have been researching resources to provide increased mental health support to students, families, and SISD employees since January. support to students, families, and SISD employees since January of two thousand twenty-two. This evening, we present Care Solace as the recommended comprehensive provider. I would like to introduce to you officially Janine Fear, who has been a good sport and has stayed all evening. I'm so sorry, Janine, that we were last on the agenda. Janine is a national partnership manager with Care Solace, and she will share with you this evening information that I shared in last week's pre-agenda meeting. And then, once we close, we'll expand on some additional information. But Janine, again, thank you for being here, and thank you for your patience and what's been a very long evening. So, Janine?
Thank you so much, Dr. Gomez, for the lovely introduction. Mr. Parker, Dr. Del Toff, and members of the board, thank you for having me this evening. I know that I am the one thing that stands between the conclusion of the meeting tonight and you being able to all go home, so I will make this very brief. I want to scoot through a handful of slides and share a little bit about the Care Solace service, what we offer to the districts that we partner with, and give you an idea of what it might look like to partner with San Angelo ISD so that we could provide some additional support to your families and your school community. Care Solace is a mental health care mission, and we are really, the goal of what we want to do is provide families with a hand to hold. We want to be their champion and their advocate through the process when they are trying to navigate the mental health care system, which for most families is very, very difficult to do on their own. A little bit about our footprint, we are actually in over four hundred and thirty school districts across the country, serving in twenty-six states now. We support a lot of school districts here in the state of Texas, serving over three point five million students and over eight million staff and family members who have touched our service since two thousand seventeen. I have some statistics here, I'm not going to read them off, but I think the one that stands off is that, stands out is that bullet point number, that third bullet point. That statistics show that fifty-two percent of families that actually go through the really hard-won process to get an appointment with a mental health care provider actually don't even show up to those appointments. With Care Solace, we show that eighty-three percent of the families that we serve and that we connect to CARE actually do show up for their appointments and that they are happy with the providers that we connect them to, which is incredibly important when you're seeking mental health. Care Solace specializes in overcoming and helping families jump through these hoops that exist when you're trying to navigate mental health. Insurance is a tough one. I don't think any mom and dad wants to call the number on the back of the insurance card for great customer service. So we help families navigate insurance, and we help families who don't have insurance as well to make sure they get care. The other thing that was really important these days, across the state of Texas, the average time it takes to get into an intake appointment is anywhere from three weeks to three months. We don't believe families need to wait that long, and we've been able to circumvent that wait time and get families into CARE sooner by providing endless care coordination and being relentless on their behalf to get that. Our ultimate goal is to connect families to services within twenty-four to seventy-two hours. So when we work with our families typically within that seventy-two-hour timeframe, we have found them at least two to three options of providers that actually have an appointment available for them within seventy-two hours to a week. So again, shrinking that timeframe so that families don't give up on the process is often crucial to make sure that they do get into CARE. So the Care Solace service, just as a very broad overview, provides different pathways for families to utilize to get connected to CARE. One is an anonymous portal pathway that we provide the district with called our Care Match System. And then we provide an internal tool that your staff interacts with, your mental health care team, your counselors, your social workers, psychologists, folks on the front line who are really trying to connect your families to community resources. Now, both of those pathways are supported by our Care Companion Team, which is a twenty-four seven team. They are multilingual, we speak over two hundred languages at Care Solace, and we are always available to families to help in their efforts when they need to get connected to CARE. We field about a hundred and fifty thousand phone calls every month from families, and thirty percent of those come in after five-thirty PM. So families reach out when they really have time to think about this. The Care Match Portal that I spoke briefly about is an external-facing tool. We provide your district with a customized URL link that you can disseminate to your families as a resource for those that want to confidentially and anonymously seek CARE. Our surveys show that there are many families out there, the majority of which, aren't comfortable coming to talk to folks at school, and they don't want people to know what happens at home, but they need a resource. This gives them a safe place to go where they answer a series of questions in this portal that will link them to providers in the community that they can then connect with for that appointment. Our providers in our database are all verified on a quarterly basis as well. The Care Loop that I spoke about is an internal tool that your counselors, your social workers, psychologists, principals, APs, school nurses often have access to. And this provides really two purposes for your school staff. When they are trying to get a family connected to community resources that are beyond the scope of those school-based services and they need to do a community referral, staff members can interact with this tool to do what we call a warm handoff to our Care Companion Team so that they can take on the heavy lift of the care coordination in making fifty, sixty, often seventy phone calls that it takes per family that we work with to find that access and that availability for them and get their student connected. And then the staff has the ability through this tool to actually track what's really happening in the progress through a dashboard piece where they see step-by-step all of the progress being made with the Care Companion and doing the coordination and actually ultimately getting that family connected and actually enrolled into CARE. We do a follow-up, which I think is probably one of the biggest points and game changers about what Care Solace does for families. We're not just one-and-done with them. We actually follow up with our families that we enroll into CARE the day after their scheduled appointment to ensure that they're actually happy with their provider. We follow up with them two weeks after, and we follow up with them thirty days after they've been enrolled into CARE to really make sure that they don't need anything else from us at that time. Customer service is very much missing in the mental health care business, and that is the, one of the gaps that we really intend to fill for the families that we serve. The last piece I'll share a little bit about the impact reports that you would receive as the board to the district. These are actually in the backend of that dashboard, and they're very recent, they roll up every twenty-four hours. But what they will provide you with is information on not only the usage of the system, how many families used your anonymous portal to book appointments on their own, those types of data, how much time was saved, how many communications were saved on behalf of your school staff when we're coordinating CARE for them. And then it also breaks down the demographics and the DSM five categories and needs in your community, and you can look at this by school site and by district-wide to really determine what additional needs you might have. And then it also gives you a look at the top ten providers in your community that are actually providing timely access to your families. Just kind of a review of the benefits. To remind you, this is a comprehensive service for the entire school community. We serve your students, of course, but all family members are also included, as well as all of the staff at San Angelo ISD, and all of the staff family members are also included in this service. Of course, our goal is to provide equitable access, fill any gaps that might be there with regards to those community resources and getting families connected, and ultimately provide the best customer service for families when they're dealing with crisis. The last thing I'll close with is just kind of a personal note, and, you know, I really want to make it very clear why I stand here and why I do this every day. I live and breathe mental health every day as a mom. I'm a single mom to these two beautiful babies. The oldest on the right there is my now eighteen-year-old, and he has struggled with mental health since he was thirteen, and I discovered he was engaging in self-harm. He has struggled with depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation for years now, and it's been a very long journey that I have been on, and I'm still on it to this day. He is, he is still struggles. But it's, this is very near and dear to me, obviously, as a mom, and I didn't have Care Solace. And so I have struggled often on my own, making endless phone calls, trying to find my kid the help he needed, whether it was an outpatient program or just therapy or a residential treatment program that he ended up in last year. So I very much know the impact that a service like Care Solace can have on a family like mine. And so I just want to close by sharing that because truly, this is, this is more to me than, than just a Care Solace, this is a personal mission for me as a mom. So thank you very much for your time. I'm very happy to answer any questions you might have.
Guys, for thinking of questions for Janine, I want to point back or go back to a piece that's very important, as I shared last week, and as Janine touched this evening again with them being a comprehensive provider and having access to all of our key stakeholder, or all of our key stakeholders having access, I can't find it now, Janine. The teacher burnout. We know that staff burnout is real. We've seen this come to surface, not just for that job family, but when employees, I want to talk from the employee lens, when employees are going through a time of crisis, they can't take on more. And when we said this was comprehensive and what set them apart and why we've been having extensive conversations and research since January, it was one of the selling points of what was so different, and I can't, I still cannot find it. It was like the fourth bullet. There it is. School staffing shortage and burnout, staff do not have the time to do more or deal with new or complicated tools. And having multiple conversations and full confidentiality and want to preserve that confidentiality, we know we have to provide additional assistance. So I just wanted to highlight that additional piece.
And I, so, one, obviously, mental health in our community is a huge issue. We have some great partners already locally, and Care Solace will work with all of our partners that are local, whether that's Shannon or West Texas Council and Guidance or any of our private providers as well, correct? I know the answer, but just for-
Yeah, just to address that. So all of the districts that we partner with have MOU partners, they have preferred providers that they work with and often refer families to. That is a high priority for us, we don't come in to disrupt those relationships. So the way it often works is during our launch process, we make sure that those preferred providers are a part of our database, we have all of the information about everything that they, who they accept, insurances, et cetera, and we make sure they're a collaborative piece of the process so that we can ensure the district, of course, that we can maintain those relationships. And if the district says, please go to our preferred providers first, that's what we will do to make sure that we, we maintain those strong relationships with preferred providers in the community.
And through our, the anonymous portal, that's available to both staff and families, correct?
Absolutely.
And so if a staff or a family wanted a virtual appointment out of town, that would also be available to them?
Absolutely. So we not only, of course, have local providers, and about sixty percent of the families or more actually prefer in-person, so that's what we aim to do for them, but we include telehealth within our database, and we have over thirty-five hundred telehealth providers across the state of Texas within the database, that if a family wants telehealth, we can connect them to a telehealth provider, absolutely.
I want to add one more thing, if I may, I said this last week, but just again to reiterate. Janine talked about how many districts they were in nationwide. Again, reiterating the amount of time we felt is important as district administrators as we've researched and gone through this process, we've had multiple conversations. I mentioned the work of Rebecca Klein, Greg, several other district administrators present here, but other Texas districts that we spoke with personally and asking questions that we've experienced include, but are not limited to Waco, Fort Worth, Mansfield, Red Oak, DeSoto, Georgetown, Channelview, Alamo Heights, and Cleveland, just to mention a few.
I'd also like to just add a couple of comments. And first, thank you again for being here. We greatly appreciate that, and I think, you know, there's great obstacles in front of our educators, and Care Solace, along with some of our other initiatives that we have, really creates a great overlay for all of our educators and staff. I think what you've heard tonight is just a comprehensive system and provides that toolkit and resources to not only hit staff and students, but their families as well. And I think that's what really kind of puts it on the mantle for us as far as a comprehensive health care option. The overlay that we also are piloting in our district is in conjunction with the Texas Tech Health Sciences Center, and there's a lot of acronyms in this, so I'm going to read those, but it's known as T-Chat, which is Texas Child Health Access Through Telemedicine. So with the T-Chat and through the Campus Alliance for Telehealth Resources and our partnership with Texas Tech, we are, and local physicians as well, this isn't yet an additional overlay for the student component. So there may be different levels of comfort with our employees or students, but we feel that this overlay with what you've heard this evening and our other initiatives really provide a blanket of support for all employees and students. So thank you.
So I'll make- Go ahead, go ahead. Well, just before you get to motion, I would just ask Dr. Gomez to, and maybe, Janine, I don't know who, it could be either one of you, but I know a few years ago, I heard the head of the Health Science Center for the University of Texas in charge of mental health spoke and at a function I was in here in San Angelo. And one thing, he was mentioning how many counselors they had at the UT Health Science Center, and it was a huge number, and talking about mental health. And I think I asked the question, I said, so the students you're really worried about are those that are coming to you guys, that's those you're at risk? He says, no, we don't worry about those, we worry about the ones that aren't getting here. But he used a statistic, and I probably won't say this right, but it was over fifty percent, he said, the biggest concern we've, we've done through surveys, the thing that concerns us most is that over fifty percent, fifty percent of the students on campus who had a friend or an acquaintance that might be talking about suicide did not know to recommend them to go to the Health Science Center. So are we doing anything on our campuses just to, for students to discuss, or will we do this? That we have assemblies or something that we let the students know that this is going to be out there and the teachers? And instruct those others, the students that do come and the teachers that do come, that at least this is, when they have a fellow teacher or fellow student that they know are having mental health issues, that they can at least be able to say, this is what you need to do, here's some, there's a resource out there for those that don't know the resources there. I mean, are we going, what, will we have a comprehensive plan on how we get this out to our parents, our teachers, and our students that they even know this exists?
I'll share from a district and most immediately if approved, and that's one of the comprehensive services with this partnership, is we work within existing structures. We don't have to coordinate some elaborate professional learning opportunity with staff for us to work through a process. Our point of contact would be our counselors. We already have a plan for that. It's very important that we connect families, students, and staff to this resource immediately, as immediate as soon as we get this approved. We would train those counselors. We want our families, staff, and students to have access, especially over the summer months when they are not connected to school resources. And so to go through and train on, for our staff to know their portion of the program, it's approximately thirty minutes. And what we normally do for a partnership and to get that information to our staff, it's much more extended than that timeframe. So Care Solace works with us, with our existing platforms of communication to help roll that information out, and we would definitely do that before families- And we would definitely do that before families, students, and staff leave for summer vacation. So we aren't waiting for this to be something we start in August. This is something we would utilize in closing out this school year, but especially during June and July, when they would not be connected to school resources. That's very important as we close out this year.
It's part of that communication process also. Our KSWIFT 12, and I may have got that in reverse order, but it provides access to over 20,400 cellphone numbers from our community. So in our system, we have over 20,400 cellphone numbers that we can send an immediate text message to.
So we would use our existing communication tools from the resource that Dr. Detloff referred to, by text messages, email communication, social media platforms to message. We have this resource available to students, families, and staff within SAISD before they leave our system for summer vacation.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve at administration's recommendation of CareSolus Service, the agreement, and the, and the cost of $47,600 based on student enrollment of $13,600. Not dollars, 13,600 students, and which includes no cost for the period of May 17, 2022 through June 30, 2022. All right, thank you, Mr. Gallegos. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other board discussion?
I just want to say thank you, Janine. This whole mental health thing, I, really, I kind of had a question. Prior to 20, well, prior to 2020, have you seen a big increase in the demand of your services for students and teachers since we came out of this pandemic?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. Yes, as I mentioned, we started as a company. We launched services in some pilot districts in 2017. When COVID hit, just prior to that and thereafter, we did see a huge uprise in the needs right away. And as time went by, actually, the staff piece of it became even a bigger need. We didn't use to include staff. We did that at the request of the districts we were servicing because they had such a need to support their staff members, and it stuck because it's so very important. So the staff piece of it has become a very, very, very huge benefit for the school districts that we serve, in addition, of course, to serving students and families. But absolutely, COVID was quite the impact on the needs for mental health. That being said, I think mental health's always been around, but COVID definitely exacerbated the awareness.
Yes, yes, it did. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify, is it, it's staff and families? If it's a family member who's not a student or a staff member, are those people included in the service? Like if it's a parent of one of our students?
Absolutely. So all of your students and all of their family members, staff and all of your family members. So if it's mom and dad that need marital counseling, that's the foundation of the home. If they reach out to us and the student's doing OK right now, we're going to help mom and dad find a counselor, absolutely.
And that goes for staff's family as well?
Hundred percent.
If I can just say one more thing too. First, thank you so much for coming. Thank you for sharing your personal story. That really adds a lot to your presentation. I also work in the mental health world, so I fully appreciate what we're hopefully about to vote for. But I just wanted to add that the statistic is that one in five people will experience a mental health issue in their lifetime. And that number, we believe, is going up with COVID, both during and after. And so I think right now, between CareSolus and T-Chat, adding these to our resources for our students and staff and families, it's really hopefully going to have the huge impact that it's intended to have. And then the other thing I wanted to add, I thought Gerard was going to say it, actually. But Gerard, Lupita, and I participated in the Legislative Action Committee a few weeks ago. And almost every region in the state of Texas said that mental health is one of their concerns that they would like to have, have talked about. And so I'm really happy that our district is being so serious about it. So thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Any other board discussion? Any public comment? Come on up, Mr. Pachetti.
I would ask the board that I agree with everything she says. You know, mental health, the kids, anxiety, teachers, students. You know, it takes everybody to help these kids grow and move on. One of the reasons that you've even met me here is because I was trying to get help for my son, and the counselor at his school was either unaware of programs or not willing to share those programs with me. So as a caveat to y'all approving the funds, which seems very fair for the amount of students that we have, that you would challenge administration to not just depend on the counselors to roll this out to everybody, but to come up with some kind of strategic plan to make sure that everybody that's eligible to have this service knows about it and not just the select few. And, you know, I would hope that, you know, if we're going to spend that amount of money, that y'all would have someone that would be, you know, on the hook for that and make sure that that rollout happens. And at some point, go and see, do people actually know that this service is available? Because if you don't know it's there, you're not going to receive the help. So, you know, the money is well-spent. People need this. But if they don't know about it, they're not going to utilize it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pachetti. That was my point also. We just need to make sure everybody knows about it. And so, any other public comment?
Mr. Parker, it's not public comment, but may I just provide further clarity? I said that counselors would receive the training, but last week in the pre-agenda, I said one of the others, further selling points in this program was the information to educators with an educational need to know. So information would not be held by one individual on that campus addressing the concern presented here. Individuals with an educational need to know that a student was in crisis or needed to be connected, those individuals would have the information.
Ms. Fear, do they, do you have? I'm talking about things that I don't even know if are appropriate. But do you have posters? Do you have things that go up on campuses that just have, "When in crisis, here's a number to call," or anything like that that allows reminder to students or even parents when they're dropping off kids? Anything that would be a reminder that there's a hotline or there's a, there's a, I don't want me to, this is not a hotline, but this is your resource, something like that?
Yeah, so certainly, when we work with our districts in that launch process that Dr. Gomez was talking about, in addition to the 30-minute training for the stakeholders, we provide launch packets with all of the announcement templates, messaging, social media, press releases, announcements to go out through your mass notification. We provide a QR code where families can scan it and access the CareSolus service right away. So we do a full, basically, messaging package for the districts. And then from there, if the district says, hey, we need this, we need this, we're going to work with you to provide any kind of other additional messaging that you might need or wish to have. So it's a pretty comprehensive thing. And then we provide monthly messaging in our dashboard for the Communications Officer to be able to. That Director of Communications can send out monthly messaging that we've basically written on behalf of the district to remind families of the resource. So we do a pretty comprehensive communication effort to make sure families are aware. That's probably one of the most important pieces of making this service as successful as it can possibly be and have the most impact is ensuring that families know it's there for them.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments or any other?
Your backpack email, your backpack thing you send home, that you'll be sending home, they will be sending home. It does have the QR code on there, on that little card?
Yep, absolutely. One of the first things we do for our districts when we launch is create that and make sure they have access to it to send out.
OK, thank you.
She's going to sit down. Anybody else have another question before she sits down? All right. Allow call for a vote. All in favor of CareSolus Service Agreement that we've been discussing in regard to student and staff wellness, mental health care, and emotional stability support? Say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you for your patience and for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have plowed through the agenda, and I think we're ready now just for, we've got some announcements. One of the announcements are just, you know, our June meetings are June 13th, pre-agenda meeting, the regular board meeting is June 20th. We have PACE graduation on May 26th. Do we have anybody receiving for the board there? Amir? All right, you've got that. You got somebody lined up for Central?
No one actually has said if they accept the class. Is there only one board member that does that?
Yeah, Bill's got Lakeview. You have to fight Bill to get that one, so. But we need somebody for Central, and so I'll, I'll help you find somebody. I, I don't mind doing it myself, but I'm going to be flying back the day before, and I don't, late that night, for something happened, and I was, got detained, and I happened to miss it at 9:00 AM. I might need to have somebody else in line, but I'll, I'll discuss that with other board members. All right. Dr. Detloff?
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, we'll communicate with our board details regarding the graduations. But the, we will meet in the parking lot to leave at 8:15 on the Saturday. And I have been in a conversation with San Angelo Police Department also to help us quickly get to our next, to the Lakeview graduation from the Central. So more details will come on that. I do want to take this opportunity very quickly to recognize, at her last board meeting, Dr. Jana Ritter. Many of you know that Jana is now, will be the superintendent. She was the lone finalist, and the board in Elgin ISD recently named her superintendent, and that will be effective in June. So this is her last board meeting with SAISD, and we just want to thank her for her work here. As you may know, Jana initiated the learner profile, educator profile, really spearheaded our community-based accountability system among many other endeavors and initiatives. And those, we are hoping, will become fabric of SAISD for the future in years to come. And so we just want to appreciate your work and honor you at a reception on Tuesday, May 24th at 4:00 PM. So Tuesday, May 24th at 4:00 PM here in the Administration Building. So thank you, Dr. Ritter, and congratulations. We're always excited when a family member spreads their leadership wings to other parts of the state. So thank you.
Coming go Tuesday, May 24th, but you'll receive an invite as well.
OK. I'm glad we ended it on a real upswing there now. Make me cry again, again. All right. Well, unless there's anything else that needs to be announced, I think we're ready to adjourn the meeting, and we'll do that now. Thank you for being here.